I think that makes everybody happy that we're to item number R7.[12.11][12.11](laughter) So let me go ahead and outline a process for item number R7 so we can all be on the same page and understand what it is that we are doing this morning. R7 is a discussion to receive input and discuss matters regarding geoengineering chemtrails. Consider providing direction to staff and consider taking other appropriate action as necessary. In a few moments, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Supervisor Giacominis to introduce her guest speaker today. What we have is we have a presentation that has been arranged in advance through Supervisor Giacominis who placed this item on today's agenda. In addition to that, there are a number of speakers that had been arranged through Supervisor Giacominis to also join with that first presentation in order so that they might be grouped and clustered together. We're going to honor that request and take them as you had asked for in advance and agreed to Supervisor Giacominis. After that, there are a lot of requests. In fact, a lot. It's a lot, as I'm sure that you recognize. We're going to take those in the order received today. Okay? Now, just say upfront, there have been almost 20 requests from folks in the room to change that received order. If you don't want to speak when your name is called, you don't need to speak. So that's up to you, but we're going to take them in deference to every person here in honoring their timely submittal, and we're going to take them in the order received after the main presentations as were agreed to in advance for their order. So we're going to stick right with what we promised to do. During the speakers that are going to come individually from the community, Supervisor Modi is going to be calling out the first name and then the next name and maybe the next name, and here's what we would appreciate. As we go through the list, if you would listen attentively for your name, and don't hesitate. When you hear your name, go ahead and come over in this direction and line up because then we won't have to all watch you as you walk from that corner of the room to this part of the room. We'd like to be able to move everybody through as rapidly. I expect that this hearing process, this public process, is going to take three to four hours based upon the number of people who have requested. So in that, there will be timely personal breaks and probably, most probably, a lunch break as well where we will continue full force to hear all of the folks who want to speak. At the end of that process, and this is with board approval, I'm suggesting all these items, we're going to conclude and hear every person that wants to speak today. At that time, we're going to end the conversation from the audience then, and we're going to ask Mr. Simon, who represents Resource Management, to come up and share with us his thoughts in response to things that he might have heard, and then we'll continue with a board conversation among the five of us here for any possible direction. So questions from board members?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Supervisor Modi.
Yeah, I have one request kind of the audience. I know that you're all here and you're very passionate and you want to support the people who are speaking, but we do have well over 50 speakers, which means that's probably a minimum of three hours. So I really do ask that you sort of limit your applause as best you can for number one, because I'm going to be introducing the next speaker and they won't be able to hear you, and number two, it just adds that much more time, and I'm pretty sure most of you don't want to be in this crowded room for three hours. We want to hear what you want to say, but I do appreciate the fact that you try to limit a little bit of your passion.
Very good. Thank you Supervisor Modi. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Supervisor Giacominis to introduce our guest speaker for the day. Thank you Supervisor Giacominis.
Thank you Chairman Ba. Chairman Ba, did you want to mention the action that the Air Pollution Control Board did several years ago?
Oh, you know, thank you, thank you. I appreciate that reminder. There have been several people that already came up today and asked, "When is the Shasta County Air Pollution Control Board going to hear this item?" We asked for and received records on Tuesday, August 5th, 2008, there was a presentation before the Shasta County Air Pollution Control Board. Speaking at that agendized meeting was Russ Wade, David Kayspear, Rodney Compton, Tom Slate, Deborah Whitman, Kimberly Percival, Rose Taylor, Randy Compton, Candace Guthrie, Linda Schreiber, Janice Powell, Dane Wiggington, Francis Mangels. Thank you. Those are the items or the names I have actually listed, made presentations that day. At the conclusion of that meeting by motion of Supervisor Modi and seconded by Supervisor Ba, all the information presented at that meeting was also forwarded to the California Air Resources Board and to the United States Environmental Protection Agency. I simply present this as an update of public information. Supervisor Giacominis.
Perfect. Thank you Chairman Ba. It's my pleasure to introduce Matthew Sutton, who will be giving our first presentation, and then he is the only one that gets additional time at the request of the group that came forward.
Please, go.
We can't hear you.
Boy, that's not usually a problem with me. Sorry. Okay, introducing Matthew Sutton, and then everybody else will be limited to the three-minute time period, so.
We didn't hear some of the names in there. The original list, we didn't hear all the names on the original list that were given. Hamed Rabi, do we have the same list?
Oh, you emailed it to me. I have it up in my office.
The speakers are referring to, they're all going to speak right now.
Okay, okay. Let's let Supervisor Giacominis go ahead. She has a pre-arranged list. I saw the email copy as well, and we're going to go through that list, and then we're going to take those from the community after that. So do we have a clear understanding?
Dane, did you happen to bring the list? Because I have it up on my desk.
We have it here.
I have it here.
Okay, perfect. We're good, we're good. We're covered. The first one is Matthew Sutton, correct?
I have announcement to make, but Matthew Sutton is not here today, and the reason he's not here today is because he received a phone call from Rick Simon on Thursday, July 10th. I have emails. First, I want to say thank you to the board. I want to say thank you to the board, my deepest respect. I hope we can all respect their wishes.[415.02][415.02](applause) If we can keep that down so we can respect their wishes and get done as fast as we can. Matthew Sutton, who made a commitment to be here today, and here's part of that commitment. These are emails. It's a solid commitment. It's not ambiguous. Dana will participate. I will be able to attend this meeting. Solid commitments all the way through until a phone call last Thursday after an hour-and-a-half conversation I was told with Rick Simon from Shasta County. Matthew, after speaking to his attorney, said he could not come. Now, when we see a contract with AECOM-
Mr. Wiggington?
Yeah.
Could you address us, please?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Les. After, this was a surprise to me as well, and I perhaps at some point that the context of that conversation could be known, but after this conversation, Matthew let me know that there were contracts between AECOM, which he is the CEO of this company, and Shasta County. So I don't know why that phone call was made and why he had to cancel after that phone call, but Matthew has assigned his time to me in that case, so I'm going to proceed with this, and maybe this issue of this phone call that caused Matthew to cancel can be addressed later.
Okay, so before you start, though, I'm going to address Supervisor Giacominis. Supervisor Giacominis, since you arranged this, did you receive a call yourself or were you included in this conversation?
No, I was not included in this conversation.
And your invitation stood for Mr. Sutton to address us today?
It did. Now, if there's a legal issue that we don't know about, I guess we need to find out.
I just want to make sure, just want to make sure that that invitation was good and not rescinded by you.
Correct.
Thank you.
No, no, it was, again, the call was initiated by Rick Simon to Matthew Sutton.
Well, my point is, this is the board that extended the invitation, no one else. So I want to make sure that the community knew that that did not change.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I implied that at all. No, it did not come from the board at all.
I didn't think you were, but I want to make sure. Sometimes people just kind of hear what they hear, and-
I understand, Les.
That invitation-
I understand.
Was strong and firm and still exists.
I agree.
We're not going to take questions from the audience, ladies and gentlemen. That's not going to happen.
No.
We're not going to take questions from the audience. Please don't do that.
So let me, I want to proceed-
This is a time for conversation from the rest of the speakers.
Thank you for listening. I'll proceed as quickly as I can now. So we have the issue of climate engineering. The semantics are important. Too much media and other officials, not saying this board, they've been very courteous, but have not used the scientific terms, and this is not used for a reason, because the term chemtrails is not a scientific term, so we try to avoid those terms. But when you see CBS News, geoengineering to fight global warming is now mainstream topic conversation with all scientific organizations and with governmental officials such as John Holdren, Obama's science advisor, who is actively advocating for the use of geoengineering. And again, this is, these are aspects that media does not cover because this would legitimize this issue. This would bring credibility to it. So we do have, again, science data that's, it's too extensive to document here, but when we have current administration officials advocating for these programs and the immediate need to implement these programs, this subject should not be marginalized as it typically is by media. When we have, this is from MIT, this diagram is from MIT where you clearly see an aircraft spraying particulates out the back. Now, again, this is mainstream scientific discussion. We have every major science institution talking about these issues right now, that these programs must be implemented. And so, again, what we ask is that this issue be given attention, and our point here, Dave, irregardless of where the contamination is coming from over Shasta County and the rest of the globe, we ask that the science be looked at and that the legitimacy of this issue be acknowledged with the science terms, that this is brought to public attention and brought into a public dialogue. This is, again, only the tip of the iceberg for what's available for documentation. This is a 40-page congressional research document, geoengineering, governance, and technology. There's a number of documents like this. We have even going back to the '60s, for example, we have 80-page presidential documents outlining the scope and scale of these programs even back that far. We see skies like this, certainly, we have a lot of people telling us this is normal commercial traffic, that this is normal, and that this is just random flights flying wherever they fly and that this stuff sticks in the air. But if this is random, that's not so random. Do we think that commercial aircraft fly in grid patterns? Again, the data is absolutely there, but we have major agencies telling us that this isn't so. In fact, there's a NASA document that says chemtrails aren't real. But again, they use a term that's not scientific on purpose, and at the same time, we have patents from NASA for geoengineering. So there's been a tremendous effort to try to marginalize an issue that's tremendously impactful for all of us, equally impactful, and I certainly don't see the board as adversarial to us. I mean, I'm very grateful that we've been allowed to speak here and bring this issue up to light, and for our point, I think acknowledgement and disclosure is due for, in this case, for local agencies, the contamination issue, because I've spoken in front of California Air Resources Board, I've spoken in front of the California Energy Commission, and it seems that all these agencies are unwilling to look at this issue, and at this point, there are certain factors that can't be denied. Contamination is one of those factors. So we have NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, admitting on the record that the atmosphere is now full of particulates and they don't know where they're coming from. So this is, this is quite astounding when you have the agency that's supposed to study this issue that's literally unable to identify the source. When I spoke in front of the California Energy Commission in Sacramento, they acknowledged the state was losing 20 to 40 percent of its rainfall from, quote, "particulates of unknown origin," but that investigation was never followed through. There's this investigation going right now with state water quality. I spoke to that representative. Their fishing game has acknowledged that there's aluminum running down the waterways. I spoke to the representative with California State Water Quality who made it clear that they were not going to test the rainfall for this contamination, but isn't that where runoff comes from? So again, we have an unwillingness to look at the obvious sources. This is a satellite image. It's a little foggy, but if you look closely in the bottom-left quadrant, you can see aircraft trails blanket spraying the Pacific. This is visible in satellite imagery every single day. These silvery white skies we see are particulates blowing in from the coastal regions, and we have patents requesting, stating the dire need to enhance the marine layer, to try to deflect some of the sun's incoming thermal energy. It's called solar radiation management. So we have satellite imagery of this happening and planes flying in loops and grids, and we have this material blowing in on us. It's coming from somewhere, and CARB, this is important. We know this metal's falling on us. We have, I furnished you guys today with about 40 lab tests from the state-certified labs showing a very, very substantial amount of metal, and again, aluminum does not exist in the environment in free form. That's important to remember because a lot of agencies try to say it's a common element, we should expect it. This is not the case. It doesn't exist in free form. So it's coming from somewhere, and CARB has told us it is not coming from China, so we know it's a more local origin. Now, we have a UV issue. This is another matter of disclosure for the board. We have a known, verifiable, indisputable contamination issue, and we know the board can't stop this. Nobody here expects that. We know that's far beyond the scope of the board, but we do have a contamination issue that's a danger to the citizens. So what we're asking, what I'm asking, is disclosure of this contamination, and we also have a very, very dangerous UV level. The bark is being burned off of trees in town. We're metering this UV with state-of-the-art meters. We're seeing UVB levels 1,200 percent higher than we're being told, and this is a government document, National Science Foundation, acknowledging that injecting sulfate particles, which is geoengineering, stratospheric aerosol geoengineering, will decimate the ozone layer, destroying from one quarter to three quarters of the ozone layer. So this is very significant, and this goes hand-in-hand with what we see. Again, article unprecedented, ozone hole opens up over the Canadian Arctic. We have very substantial northern hemisphere ozone depletion, ozone depletion over even northern California is very substantial. We're seeing very dangerous UV levels. We're simply asking that that be disclosed. That's all. So again, this is a public health issue that we believe is necessary to disclose. This is a headline from a week ago, "Blazing World Recorred: Strongest UV Rays Ever Measured on Earth." Many of you are familiar with the UV reading, a reading of 10 or 11 is considered extreme. NASA has just recorded, in fact, this is 11 years old, I don't know why it took 11 years for them to disclose this, readings of 43. 43 is absolutely lethal to be outside. I mean, it's very dangerous to be exposed to that, so again, we have very high readings here. We're asking for that to be disclosed. Health effects of UV radiation, the list is much longer than what it shows here, but we're seeing everything we would expect to go along with this exposure going off the charts. So again, this comes down to a recognition of what's going on in our skies, and more importantly, where this board is concerned, an investigation and disclosure of the contamination and UV issue, which again is a public health hazard. These are trees in our local parking lots here. The bark is completely burnt off these trees. Foliage is dropping. Branches are dying off on the trees. The trees in redding don't look good, and this is not just a drought-related issue. And I've been in the field with USDA soil scientists measuring also soil pH changes, and this is another arena where we know this contamination is happening. We're seeing pH changes of 10 to 12 times toward alkaline from established USDA soil baseline studies. So again, one more source of confirmation that this contamination is indeed there. Trees in redding, again, when I moved here 12 years ago, the trees looked outstanding in this city. Now they look quite horrific and getting worse by the day, and this is exactly what would be the known and expected effect with extensive UV damage. Geoengineering causing drought. All of us know we're being droughted out. For 10 years, I've said, because the science says so, that the more they aerosolize, the less it will rain here, period. So again, we have yet one more confirmation of when they spray upstream in our storm track, it diminishes and disperses our rain.
Mr. Wiggington, I'm going to ask a question. How much time did we have scheduled for? Okay, has that already passed?
That was a 10-minute beep.
So let's do this. How much more time do you think?
30 seconds.
Okay, very good. We want you to be able to conclude.
Thank you, Les. Thank you. NOAA already deciding that we're not going to get rain from El Niño, which is astounding that they would know that so quickly. Another satellite photo, and this is hard to see on this screen, but the entire, people can view this at geoengineeringwatch.org, the entire Pacific is covered with grid patterns in this shot. It's hard to see. Prevalence of Alzheimer's disease going off the charts. Autism, 10,000 percent increase, known connection with aluminum, same with Alzheimer's and dementia. Alzheimer's and autism, the common link, aluminum exposure. Last slide, the right to know. That's all we're asking. The public has a right to know there's a public health hazard in regards to the heavy metal contamination and the UV radiation. That's all we're asking is for that disclosure. Thank you for the extra time. Thank you for all the-[1135.51][1135.51](laughter) Out of respect to the supervisors, they're showing great courtesy, and that no other board has had the courage to do yet, so let's give them all the respect they deserve.
Before we move on to the scheduled additional presenters at three minutes apiece, and I'm going to just ask in advance as you come up that we're going to hold you to that three minutes.
They know that.
I do want to ask this board before, because you're our main presenter today, if there are any additional questions at this time from this board.
No.
Okay, so I have just two questions, and I'd like to ask you, and please excuse this, this is not meant in any other way but out of complete respect. Could you just really concisely, what do you believe the purpose of this engineered spraying is?
I would tell-
I mean this in all sincerity. What do you say the purpose of it is?
I can tell you what the stated purpose is by governmental document and US tests.
Yeah, right into that mic there.
I can tell you what the stated purpose is, solar radiation management, SRM, to block the sun. That's the stated purpose. The consequences don't seem to be considered with these programs, but that is the stated purpose on almost all UN and global governance documents for these programs.
Okay, and obviously, you presented a great deal of material to myself and to other board members over the years, and that is a conclusion drawn. I just wanted to draw that out today because I didn't hear that specific language, so I wanted to make sure we state that. But then, on a personal level, I have another question, and I've asked many people, and no one's been able to answer this question for me, so I mean this in all sincerity. Why does the spraying create a drought in California and flooding in the Mideast or the Midwest?
Thank you for asking that question.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it.
When you aerosolize the storm track, and the science backs up what I'm saying word for word, you diminish and disperse the rain. This is not seeding to create rain. This is seeding to create artificial cloud cover, and because there's too many condensation nuclei, it tends to disperse that moisture exactly as we've seen over California again and again. Back to my talk in front of the California Energy Commission, they recognized this fact. I spoke to their top scientist. When you have too many particles in the air, it diminishes rain. It does not augment it if those particles are too small. So it tends to migrate moisture from one place to another, creating drought and deluge. And this is very well documented from every major science institution, from MIT, Scientific American, these effects are known. So it's not a uniform effect. It tends to disrupt the hydrological cycle completely, so when you spray upstream in the storm track, it tends to migrate that moisture somewhere else where it comes down in a deluge, and that's exactly what we see.
Mr. Wiggington, thank you very much.
Thank you, Les.
I appreciate that.[1317.01][1317.01](applause) Folks, I know your encouragement and your passion, but we have other requests to speak, and we're going to kind of be here all day if we... Mr. Wiggington, if you'd come back again, please. We're not through with you yet. Supervisor Chappell.
You can do it.
Thank you Chairman Ba.
You're welcome.
Mr. Wiggington, I just, I've had one statement here, and I want to see if you confirm that. In your belief of following through with this and trying to get situations resolved, is it because it is a public health hazard, is that one of your number-one concerns that this must be disclosed?
That is our request of the board, because that is why these programs can go on and on and on, because media will not cover it until the actual effects are made known. And this contamination issue, again, is absolutely verifiable. Same with the UV issue. We can meter it for you. We have state-of-the-art meters. So, and we have corroboration from other science studies, so yes, that is the request of the board. We fully recognize the board has no power to deal with this issue, nor does CARB nor other state agencies, but the contamination issue is a public health hazard, and we believe that disclosure is necessary, required, and that's all we're asking is disclosure of the heavy metal contamination and the UV issue. That's what we're asking for, yes.
Thank you. Very good. Any other questions from the board of Mr. Wiggington at this time? Mr. Wiggington, thank you very much for the presentation, and then I'll ask Supervisor Giacominis, do you have the order, or do we want to go to Mr. Supervisor Modi?
My gratitude to all of you.
Thank you, sir.
Leonard, everybody on the right list, okay.
Very good. So the rest of the agreed-upon presentations, they are going to be called out in advance, and then Supervisor Modi is going to move to those who submitted requests today as well to speak. Thank you Supervisor.
You know, and maybe I can suggest one other way to show your support of the speakers, but at the same time allow us to proceed. I did this one time before, and it worked very well. Rather than yelling or clapping, perhaps if you just choose to raise your hands, that will show us that you support the speaker, but it also will show, as I hope, I'm sure you plan to do, is to show, you know, show the support to the media, so maybe that, so maybe that might be one way to-
You're getting some love Supervisor Modi. I saw some hands out there.[1456.53][1456.53](applause)
So, perfect. So the next speaker is Rosalynn Peterson, followed by Alan Buckman.
Hello, my name is Iraja Sivadas. Rosalynn Peterson of USDA was not able to make it today, and Dane Wiggington asked me if I could fill in for her. As I said, my name is Iraja Sivadas. I'm a-
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm a disabled combat veteran, is the longest I've stood up in a long time. I really appreciate that you are taking time to listen to us today. I am an instructor of mathematics at Shasta College and a member of the Union for Concerned Scientists. And this will be very short. I have a very short talk. There's just two main points that I'd like to make. One is that aircraft making a condensation trail is very similar in many ways to when you go outside on a cold day and exhale, you create a condensation trail. That little cloud is a condensation trail. Now, if you take a two-mile walk on a cold day, and you can turn around and you can see your condensation trail tracking all the way back for two miles, that's the kind of idiocy, idiocracy, excuse me, that's how crazy it is to think that what we're looking in the sky is actually condensation trails when they travel from horizon to horizon. The second point is, there's a huge amount of aluminum being found because these sprays have aluminum, strontium, barium, manganese, and there's a lot of argument that aluminum is very common to be found, but aluminum is only common in a bonded form. It's not common in a free form, and we're finding high rates of free aluminum in the soil, which is not natural. So thank you again for listening to us. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Sivadas.
Alan Buckman, followed by Francis Mangels.
One quick comment was Rosalynn was really sorry she couldn't make it today. Her mother fell and broke her wrist, and so she has to take care of some hospital duties. Anyway, I'm Alan Buckman. I was a weatherman in the United States Air Force, was a wildlife biologist with the Department of Fish and Wildlife for 38 years. I have a lot of experience, field experience. I've been studying the cloud situation and doing research for the last 12 years. Our air and our natural resources, I want to tell you that we're in very great danger from the pollution that's coming down over us, and we've been led astray by the military-industrial complex, and they're responsible for the clouds' creation and weather manipulation programs. They're dark operations. That's why they're not out in the media. Now, I'm here to give you testimony that contrails, chemtrails, they're not contrails, are indeed real. They're spraying almost every day. I sit out with my wolf dogs in the afternoon, and I watch the clouds and watch the spraying program going on. We have clouds in the sky we've never seen before. Almost every day, I'm seeing clouds I've never seen before, and NASA has been even named a few of these new clouds. It's really interesting, but NASA is a corporation. I want you to know that. We were warned about the takeover of our freedoms by the military-industrial complex by both Eisenhower and Kennedy, and Eisenhower and his parting comments, and then Kennedy later. I think it's obvious now with the Citizens United and McCutcheon rulings that they're gaining traction on us, folks. We are in trouble more than just the spraying program. The metal compounds that are being used are environmentally dangerous. We need to be monitoring them. We need to be testing them. And because our previous inquiries have gone nowhere, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and hope that we can find some testing program by certified testing laboratories to actually measure these effects, and so we have a basis on which we can protest, you can protest, if your concerns match mine. And believe me, I'm seriously concerned with what I'm watching. As a wildlife biologist, I've been watching the ecosystem collapse. When you lose all your stream organisms, when you have aluminum overload in your streams, you're killing your microbial bacteria, and you're disrupting the entire ecosystem. So it goes way beyond just a little bit of pollution. How did Monsanto know to create aluminum-resistant plants? I don't think I've heard anybody ask that question. Okay? So what I'd like to suggest to you...
So that would be your notice to draw to a conclusion, please.
Yes, sir. I was just gonna do that. I would like to ask you to put a little bit of funding towards some real testing programs of snow and rain and vegetation. Now, I've tested lichens and found very high levels in the lichens, and they get all of their nutrients from the air and the rain. So it's a good guideline, and I think you would find out a lot of things to help support this.
Francis Mangels, followed by Jeff Nelson.
Welcome.
Greetings, gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm a retired scientist, bachelor's, cum laude, forestry, master's in zoology, 35 years USDA scientist, Soil Conservation Service, US Forest Service, civil service equivalents in range, wildlife, fisheries, geology, agriculture, soils, ornithology, entomology, botanomy, ecology, hydrology, and I qualify to speak. Just letting you know. Okay, these previous guys, I've watched exactly what they do, and yes, they are correct. I've seen exactly the same stuff, so bear no marks on those. Insects, I've done studies in Siskiyou County. We're at 20% abnormal. The aquatic insects basically made a nosedive in 2006 to about 20% abnormal. So far this year, I have sampled 200 trout stomachs. 98% of them are empty. So sorry about the trout fishing, fellows. The new flies, stoneflies, dipterus, and caddis flies are damn near gone, except in areas where there's...
I'm gonna remind you to address the board of supervisors, please.
The terrestrial sampling is down to about 20% abnormal, except for pest species like ants. We're seeing a loss in major bird species, and as the gentleman said, the ecosystem is unraveling, and Audubon's been telling me that for years. You want some figures? Okay, latest water test, tested the rain. 13,100 micrograms per liter of aluminum in the rain in 2013. Normally, it should be zero. So 13,100 is pretty damn much, folks. It used to be zero. Then it was one-hundreds in the 2000s, and then since 2010, it's into the 1,000s, and the latest, 13,100. In the snow on Mount Shasta, pristine Mount Shasta, 61,000 feet, no, excuse me, 8,000 foot level, 61,000 micrograms per liter, four times the amount that is found in the soil up there. Where in the hell is this stuff coming from if it's not coming from the soil? Now, normal, again, it's, you know, these tests are international in scope. We're seeing this all over the world, guys. Okay, pH of acid soils is 20 times more alkaline. The aluminum in the soil has doubled in the last 10 years. The rain normal was 5.6. It's 20 times more alkaline. Aluminum blocks essential nutrients. I am unable in my garden to restore normal pH, and that's because nanoparticles are now in the circulatory systems of both plants and humans. So welcome, fellow Guinea pigs. The colossal decrease of agriculture is something I worry about even more than the previous info about autism and Alzheimer's. Just about there, okay. See my paper, Geoengineering: What We Know. The latest update is 7/11/14. It's available, and nobody has been able to correct it or debunk it for five years.
Thank you, Mr. Mangels.
Jeff Nelson, followed by Russ Lazuka.
Good morning. As you can see, I was a airline pilot. And nine years as an instructor, and last seven as a lead instructor at the largest flight academy in the world. Part of that job was teaching all these pilots about engines and weather. Oh, the pink here is leftover from the Fourth of July. It was supposed to be red, gray, and blue, and the red did not go away. It turned pink. Anyway, make it short, sweet, and simple. Jet engine is very simple. It sucks. It compresses, it bangs, and it blows. And so what happens is these turbines suck the air in, increasing the amount of density of the air, goes into a combustion chamber where it's heated and expands again, comes out as thrust at a very high temperature, similar to when you blow up a balloon and let the balloon go, and it goes straight, you know, flying off. Now, when that hot air exits the tailpipe, this occurs, the contrails, not the chemicals, the contrails occur because of cold air, minus 30. It takes a high altitude, around 30,000 feet plus, and that air turns to, there's a carbon dioxide and water vapor in that exhaust. That turns to ice crystals, and that's what you see, the white stream behind it. Those white crystals of ice warm up, dissolve, and the smoke goes away. And it never lasts more than a minute. Usually, it's in seconds, depending outside air conditions. What we're seeing now, and I first could not believe it, and I started looking at the skies, and these are not normal. They're not natural. There's something going on. I don't know who it is or why they're doing it. All I can testify is it's not natural, and it's not normal. It's got to be some outside influence doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Russ Lazuka, followed by Hamid Robb, Robb Bies.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Rabi is the last name. Hamid, first name.
I'm sorry. That... Yeah, that's fine.
Right. I heard something similar to my name. It was close enough. I'm a neurologist, practicing in reading for 17 years, and in the past five years, I have seen the number of patients with Alzheimer's disease, Parkinson's, and other neurodegenerative diseases tremendously increase, almost quadruple. Why is the reason for that? I don't have enough knowledge and data to draw a conclusion. And basically, even no one center, even university-based center, can come to a firm conclusion for the reason for that. But the explanation that they provide to us, that the reason for increased number of these patients is because of increase in the population of aging people, means that people are getting older and stay alive because of progress of medicine, and that causes the dementia to surface up, does not seem very convincing. Almost is like saying that dementia is like this and an act of God. On the other hand, we do know that we have a trend, we have a trend of thought for a long time, that we make a mistake and we jump into a very simple, the most simple or straightforward, fix-it-at-any-price solution. And it seems like this is the scenarios playing at the present time. There are many activities that are reported. We hear bits and pieces, but we don't really have the whole result from it. And we do need to put the burden of proof on those who have the authority and have access to the data or the activities that are happening all over. We know that there are a small group of experts, scientists, that their conflict or lack of conflict of interest is not very clear to us. Basically, have the eyes and ears of those in power in the government, and they are circulating the idea of this so-called "quick fix" for environmental calamities that has happened. And that is what is basically geoengineering. They provide solutions, basically, as you heard, to spray nanoparticles, very small particles, to basically reflect the dangerous irradiation from the space.
So that would be your notice to draw to a conclusion?
Okay, so what I'm getting to a conclusion is that these nanoparticles, they basically trigger a programmed cell death in the brain, and that is the ultimate path we see in Alzheimer's.
Thank you, Mr. Bies.
Russ Lazuka, followed by Fred Meyer.
My name is Russ Lazuka, Shasta County resident, 20 years, US Air Force veteran, 17 years of aviation experience, and 15 years as a commercial pilot, to include Delta Airlines. That being stated, I have witnessed various weather phenomena. Additional education pertinent to this issue, I'm a certified, I was contracted to PGU, and later as a supervisor with Aspen Tree Service. My primary job was to advise clients of hazard tree situations, meaning dying trees, and removal of same. Humans in many ways react to outside environmental elements very similar as do plants. One example is absorption, and they are today in declining nature of respiratory failure. Lack of water and absorption of toxic chemicals are the main killers along with very high UV. Commercial aircraft are assigned a code, a radar identification, called a squawk. They are assigned altitudes and airways like highways in the sky. Contracted tankers, that is civilians, like Evergreen, flying for the purpose of weather modification, will not have a squawk code, nor will they be on an assigned airway. They will also be on military radio channels. Commercial air traffic control will not be able to inform commercial pilots of approximate aircraft. Therefore, you look up, and you see all these grid and crisscross patterns of aerosol in the sky, and there are no passengers onboard. Those trails, if they are true condensation trails, will completely dissipate within 15 seconds. A statement issued by the United States Air Force that contrails become visible roughly about a wingspan behind an aircraft. A Boeing 757 has a wingspan of about 125 feet. That means behind the engines of that aircraft, you will see a chemtrail of 125 feet that will quickly dissipate. Evergreen Aviation admits the weather modification spraying, I got a patent number here, they call them chem bombs. Got a beautiful picture that you can go online and find. Tons of aerosol can be released in a line up to 250 miles or in huge clusters, that's when you see the interruptions in the sky, of batches of artificial cirrus clouds. However, behind an aerosol-spraying aircraft, the stream persists, and according to the winds aloft, will dissipate only after hours of lingering, because the chemicals are falling out of the sky onto the planet. I will close with this. No one has to have prescience to become informed. It's there. Look up. Look around. There are no contiguous states, nor Alaska, nor Hawaii, nor the future state of Jefferson, or any other continent, who is impervious to the aerosol chemicals and contaminant particulates purposely sprayed in our stratosphere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lazuka.
Fred Meyer, followed by Mark McCandish.
Hi. I'm not Fred Myers, but I'm stepping in for him. I'm Dr. Frank Lavossi. I've been in the community since 1980.
It's good to see you, Dr. Lavossi.
Good to see you, too. Thank you for holding this meeting. I became interested in chemtrails about eight years ago when I was in Hawaii, and the Hawaiians are really being very vocal about it. Every place I've gone in the world now, and most recently Quebec, and Prince Edward Island, Nova Scotia, Maine, and Massachusetts, they're all over the place. I'm also a pilot, and I've flown into Travis Air Force Base on several occasions. There's a whole area designated to replenishing these planes that fly and drop this chemical on us. It's totally guarded. The people that are loading these planes with the chemicals are dressed in complete hazmat outfits, so if this is not harmful, why are they in a complete hazmat outfit? For those of you who don't know, when a hazmat outfit, it looks like a spacesuit. So they're wearing this, and muir à. As a doctor, I can tell you there's been about a 25% increase in lung problems in this area, and in most areas that they're spraying. Secondly, I concur about the increase in number of Alzheimer's. They have since been able to take the aluminum and micronize it, which means it'll stay up longer. But it also means, and I don't know if any of you have noticed a metallic taste in your mouth when they're spraying, but you inhale that, it goes up through your cribriform plate and into your, through your sinuses, and into the brain. If you remember, eight to 10 years ago, there was this big move to get rid of aluminum from underarm deodorant, because it would cause Alzheimer's. Look what they're doing to us now. Any agency I've called have been stonewalled. Oh, this is being put on by the UN. Now, since when does the UN have airspace activity over the United States of America, or also over any other country, for that matter? And if that's the case, who's paying for it? And I bet you the taxpayer is paying. So all I can say is it's about time we get up in arms about this, because it is affecting our health. I look around, and I see people are starting to look up and see this. Many times I've spoken about chemtrails, and I get this blank look on my face. What are you talking about? I'm saying, look up. As a pilot, what, before I fly, I look up? And so, boy, they're really out there working. I really thank you for this opportunity to speak, but it's high time that we, as citizens of this great country, take action.
Thank you, Dr. Lavossi.
Mark McCandish, followed by Arundel Spindelaus.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I came here mostly as a person who's worked in the military-industrial complex, worked on F-106s in the Air Force, had a secret clearance, worked as a consultant to a variety of the top aerospace companies, as a conceptual artist and a designer. I've had a secret clearance for a number of years, and I've worked on systems that are still classified today, 20 years later. I want to give you a little bit of history on the background behind nanoparticles, as been described before. A nanometer is one billionth of a meter. It's very small. In fact, if you have particles, say, that are 40 or 50 nanometers across, you can take and line 50 of them up next to a single red blood cell. These things are extremely tiny. They're pervasive. The manufacturing processes, there's probably five or six different ones that I know of, there's probably others, but the explosion of nanotechnology has grown since the late 1980s, early 1990s. It is now growing exponentially. If you've ever seen or heard of a grain silo explosion, where particles of grain grind against one another, produce a dust, and then one spark will set it all off, an explosion. This is kind of exemplary of what nanoparticles represents in terms of the impact that they have on the environment, because you can spread so many small little particles through the environment, it dramatically increases the surface area that's in that environment, because there's so many of them. When you look up at the sun and you see a white haze, that is aluminum floating in the air right now, and it's coming from the aircraft. Now, as it happens, the Air Force conducted a study, starting in 1993. It was called "In vitro Toxicity of Aluminum Nanoparticles in Rat Alveolar Macrophages." That's a real fancy way of saying, testing the effect of aluminum nanoparticles on the white blood cells in the little air sacs in your lung, the alveoli. And what they found in this eight-year study was that these particles, when you're exposed to it long enough, it suppresses the ability of your white blood cells to defend you from airborne infections coming into your lungs. So it suppresses your immune system. But they also found that these same particles, once they get into your system, they can actually go through the barrier in each one of the cells, they get inside the cells, and these particles can actually suppress the ability of mitochondria, which are in the cells, that help to gobble up toxins and things that would be harmful to the nucleus and the reproduction process of the cells in your body. These processes are suppressed, and so essentially, by breathing this material in, your immune system is dramatically suppressed. Now, in addition to this, the materials that are going into the environment right now, aluminum oxide nanoparticles and barium nanoparticles, these just happen to be the same materials that they use in nano-thermite explosives. And so when this stuff settles down out of the air into the environment, it is small enough to be absorbed through the root structure of the trees in the forests. And so when there's a forest fire, and there will be a forest fire, those fires burn dramatically hotter. The example out here in Oono is just one example. Wow, that was fast.
It goes by fast, doesn't it?
Yes. Anyway, the point is, the point is that the cost of firefighting, the cost in the healthcare system have nearly doubled in the last 10 years. The amount of acreage is lost because of fires. The impact on human health is dramatic, and it's well documented. So, in fact, in closing, I want to say that NASA has also conducted a research program in what they call metallized fuels. We're actually putting aluminum oxide right in the fuel, because it has two atoms of aluminum and three atoms of oxygen, so during the combustion process, it releases all that oxygen and dramatically increases efficiency, but it leaves the aluminum in the air.
Thank you, Mr. McCandish.
You're welcome.
Arundel Spindelaus, followed by Kim Moore. Is Arundel here?
Hi, Joe. Or Dr. Davis, excuse me. Is Dr. Davis here? Is Dr. Davis... Here he comes.
I guess I'm...
Good morning, I guess I'm a substitute. I'm Dr. Steve Davis, I'm a practicing chiropractor, naturopath here in the community, been here for almost 30 years. And the unfortunate thing is, is that I started out in this healthcare practice, I actually got my undergraduate work over at Humboldt State. And Humboldt State, we had a bunch of hippies that hug trees, and then what we're doing was worry about the environment. We created this thing called Environmental Protection Agency, and then from that, we're looking at the air, food, and water. Air, food, and water is related to the particles, the chemicals, and substances. We have agencies, federal agencies, state agencies, local agencies, whose job is to try to protect us from all this. Then what happened is that we have industries that have tried to come into our community here, they do not stay or do not come because the EPA won't allow them because of what they're going to release from ground up. We've got things coming from sky down, and it's a huge, huge problem. Because as it comes down, what happens is a couple of things, is that it actually is in our air, we breathe it, and as we breathe it, it's actually going to go up through our nostrils into our brain, easiest access to our brain frontal lobe. The contaminants that are in, that have been identified, which already have been mentioned, are aluminum. Aluminum is the number one neural free radical generator to the brain to cause early apoptosis, which is early death of brain, and it begins to set off the scar tissue, which we call the amygdala, which is a part, which is part of the chemical matrix related to Alzheimer's. That's problem number one, because when we look at the Alzheimer issue, we say those are the old. The real problem is, and the real scare I have, is as I am a father of two, I'm a grandfather of three, my youngest one will be getting married next August, or this August, hopefully she will be able to spawn and have some children of her own, and then we'll have more. So the whole process is, is that in what we have going on is our children. When they're playing outside, your emblem says, come, come to the North State, enjoy us, enjoy the mountains, the streams, the fish, et cetera. Come to us and bring them resources and your money, and children go outside and play. In the last five years, I do alternative medicine, which means we're looking for those things. I was part of the early group that was looking for aluminum in ADD and ADHD, and all of those children that started to develop those phenomenons had high levels of aluminum. When we figured out protocols to detox them out, to free the body of those particular contaminants, what happened is that their brains came back. When we do this to the age, it doesn't come back as quick, but it will come back. But I'm seeing Alzheimer's in 56-years-old. Back in the 70s, Alzheimer's was when you were 80. So the drama is, is our children. ADD started in the 70s. Autism was not on the radar. There was no documents, there was no information. It was 1 in 100,000 children. Today, what we have is 1 in 48 boys. Boys play outside all day. As a kid, when I was a little boy, I was outside all day long. And the, and the unfortunate thing is, is that moms now, when I do my testing-
You're drawing to conclusion sound, thank you.
Okay, when I do my testing, and we do hair analysis and other mineral analysis, we see these things. The thing that's most disturbing to me is aluminum, cadmium, barium. Barium substitutes for calcium, calcium makes strong bones. Cadmium is a known carcinogen, is actually in top 65 on the list, a known carcinogen. So what we have is this. We have environmental contaminants, we have been aware of this since the 60s, now we've got semen onslaught. We need to have some kind of way to warn moms, keep their kids from going outside.
Thank you, doctor. One question for you, are you also a neurologist as well?
No, I'm not, sorry.
Okay, just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that completes the 10 scheduled speakers, and now we'll go with the ones who signed up to speak, starting with Kim Moore, followed by Lorena O'Malley.
Well, I thank you guys also for having this presentation. You know, we've been working on it for months. Oh, I'm Kimberly Moore, Cherokee, Native American. Again, I want to thank you for having this presentation. We have been on our hands and knees begging for your help and cooperation. I hope that now that we've brought in the experts and let them share their evidence and testimony, that you will be willing to come to the table and work with us to help us get to legislators and to help us file the federal complaints. That being said, I'm going to go ahead. California should have jurisdiction over the weather, not the federal government, not the military. Because of these programs and experiments conducted by the federal government, the military, this has contributed to the drought we see now in California as the satellite images show. Also, whenever there is a chance of raining, we have observed among many other people across the state that they create the chemtrails towards the clouds when there is a chance of rain and spray so heavily, which dry out the clouds every time and it cannot rain. Such, such actions have damaged agriculture. California agriculture is very important. There are programs available to create rain through seeding. It is not something we recommend, but if it is necessary, the state of California should have the option to create rain as the federal government has failed to do so. In other countries, such programs were implemented by states in order to help agriculture. The federal government or the military shall not have jurisdiction to a state issue and overrule the state, which has brought drought and damages to the state of California. The federal government, military's own interest, has harmed agriculture, our farmland, our forest, our nature, us. For all of the aforementioned reasons, it is essential that the state of California and not anyone else has jurisdiction over the weather, and thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Lorena O'Malley followed by Tom Dussel.
Hello, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. One issue that definitely needs to be addressed and disclosed to the public is the increase of UV radiation. As any mother would, I became particularly concerned when I learned about this because the way by which my family would get vitamin D is through sunlight exposure. Anyone who is aware can agree that the sun feels more intense than it has in years past. You can see the proof through the die-off of plants and trees, gardens not thriving, and the steep decline of forests. This is not, this is the new norm, but it's not normal. All this is happening because the particles being released through geoengineering are ripping apart the ozone layer. The ozone layer is what protects and preserves life. So this is what's supposed to happen. Sunlight passes through the atmosphere, all UVC and UVB radiation should be absorbed by the ozone layer. What happens when our ozone layer is depleted? And there was a study done here in our North State last year, GeoEngineeringWatch.com purchased top-of-the-line UV metering equipment and had a 40, 40-year environmental metering veteran with 20 years government experience and 20 years experience as a private consultant, measure each day for approximately 21 days in July of 2013. The readings reflected an exponential rise in UVB radiation. Due to its high energy, its potential for causing biological damage to plants, animals, and humans is exceptionally high, and even small increases could lead to significant biological damage. There are numerous peer-reviewed studies that verify this fact. According to agencies like the World Health Organization, no more than 5% of the UV reaching the surface of the earth should be UVB. The other 95% should be UVA, UV, UVC should be zero. So what did the test show? UVB, the most lethal form of UV radiation, has now escalated to almost 70% of the total UV reaching the surface of our planet. At least, this is the case in several places measured in the US. This can only mean that ultra, that the total ultraviolet exposure has also escalated sharply, making overall UVB levels worse still. In addition, the testing consistently showed significant levels of UVC, which used to be filtered out by the ozone layer, some 100,000 feet up in our atmosphere. Current testing levels reveal that almost 70% of the UV radiation is currently in the UVB and UVC range, not 5 or less percent, as we're being told by the media. This translates into nearly a 1,400% increase in UVB as a percentage of total UV. Depletion of the ozone layer is likely to aggravate existing health effects caused by exposure to UV radiation. Consequently, human beings and the environment are exposed to higher UV radiation levels and especially higher UV levels that have the greatest impact on human health, animals, marine organisms, and plant life. My concern is, if there's no ozone layer, there's no life on earth. It's that simple.
Thank you, Ms. O'Malley.
Tom Dussel followed by Rose Taylor.
Hi, my name's Tom Dussel. I'm a veteran of the 70s hippie movement. I just want to say, and I want to say this very loudly, it's about time. I commend you folks for recognizing and allowing us to come here and speak our mind. It's confirming all my paranoias that nobody's admitted, nobody's talked about, and it's caused, it's caused, I don't know, I don't believe in the government anymore. I commend you, I really do. I want to make that very point. I want to know just how much Monsanto is involved in this. As we know, they're poisoning our foods, that we're eating corn, beef, everything you buy is going to have Monsanto in there because they have the patent on the DNA of their genetically-modified corn. It's not good for us. Personally, I feel this is an act of terrorism. If I had a missile that could reach that plane, I would shoot that son of a gun down and find out who they are, where they came from, who's paying for them, and why. I know there's aluminum, barium, and copper, we all know that. You control the climate, you control the world, they're telling us. FEMA concentration camps, I feel like those are being misset up for us because they're going to poison us, poison our water, poison our food. Pretty soon, they're going to come around with SWAT teams, and they're going to take us away and put us in these FEMA camps. These FEMA camps are designed not to keep people out, but to keep people in, and that's what's really scaring me. Prisons are business, let's admit it. Who wants to take prisons out of a business? Not corporate America, that's for darn sure. And that flag you got sitting up there is a corporate flag. I will not salute it, I will not pledge to it, but I am a true American person. Anyway, I commend you folks for bringing this up in the open, and everybody else that's spoken, have just spoken the truth. They've confirmed all my concerns. Thank you very much.
Rose Taylor followed by Mark Steiner.
Hi, my name is Rose Taylor, and I was here in 2008-
You're welcome.
-when we asked the supervisors to investigate and look into this issue. I thank you again that you have the courage, because I am going to submit this, I have passed it around. It's the top whistleblowers, including former premier of British Columbia, Megan, Kristen Megan, former US officer, who saw the aluminum barium coming in with the contractors' names blackened out. She said, her superior officer said, um, she, her, her job was basically is to sign off on the chemicals coming into the base, and she said, "I couldn't connect the chemicals to the projects, and my superior officer asked me, 'Just sign off.'" She says, "That's not my job, and that is not defending my country." They threatened her, she was up for reenlistment, she got out, and she's still alive, and I encourage you, she's all over YouTube, she is truly an American hero. I'm going to give you these, I hope you look at them. The History Channel, which is corporate, amazing, I just watched it. It showed that the Russians were most likely responsible for our California drought from 1988 to 1992. They were the first to develop these ionic heaters that we now have. We immediately, when we watched what they were doing, we immediately developed our own in Gekona, Alaska. I really encourage you to take a look at the History Channels. It's called weather warfare, they present it in a very neutral way, but it's very convincing that they're not only using the chemtrails, but they're using these one, what is it?
Harp.
Harp, but it's 1.7 gigawatts, billions of watts against us. Now, I don't have a lot of time here, so I'm just going to say, we're all going to meet our makers, you're going to be meeting your own maker, you're going to be asking yourself, "What did I do? What did I do to make this place a better place? What did I do for the seven generations ahead?" I'm going to read by this young poet who said, "It's 3:23 in the morning, and I'm awake because my great-great-grandchildren won't let me sleep. My great-great-grandchildren ask me in my dreams, 'What did you do while the planet was plundered? What did you do while the earth was unraveling? What did you do once you knew?'" And I ask you to, to show the courage that these people have all around the world, including a woman from Spain is here to speak. She flew in just to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Mark Steiner followed by Joe Marman.
I'd like to thank the board for hearing us today. My name's Mark Steiner.
Welcome.
Thank you. Based on everything you folks have heard today from individuals with a knowledge base far greater than mine, there could be no possible way this can be swept under the rug any longer. As elected officials representing the people, you have a moral and ethical obligation to investigate, then inform the people of Shasta County in a timely manner. If you choose to do nothing, at some point, the people will hold each and every one of you responsible and accountable. Throughout the course of your investigation, you will certainly encounter resistance from state or federal levels, at which point you will have to ask yourselves, "Why? If there is nothing to hide, why the resistance?" A myriad, a myriad of things can occur, from threats of cutting state or federal funding to personal threats. How you choose to deal with these threats could possibly make a difference for all of our futures. You're being given an opportunity today to do the right thing for yourselves, the residents of Shasta County, our country, and our world. I implore you to make the right choice and see this issue through, exhausting all resources until this mayhem ceases. We as people of Shasta County are reaching out to you for assistance, knowing you can't necessarily stop the problem, but make some impact and bring public awareness to this crisis at hand that is currently affecting all of us. Please continue to educate yourselves, and remember, the clock is ticking, and time is not on our sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner.
Joe Marman followed by Laura Rhodes.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors. I'm Joe Marman from Sacramento, an attorney. And back in May 6th of 2011, I called your Shasta Air County Air Pollution Control Officers, Russ Moll and Ross Bell, asked them, "How come Shasta County is getting sprayed like crazy with this geoengineering chemtrails?" And they said, "We don't know anything about it." I said, "Why don't you look into it?" There was no answer. I wrote to them, and I explained in a two-page letter what was going on with this geoengineering spraying, and I got no answer from them. In that letter, I discussed the contaminants in air, water, and the snow, that outrageous levels that should never be happening. It was illegal contamination. I offered to meet with them. I suggested that I would volunteer to sue Shasta County residents, to sue Shasta County for failing to act to protect the citizens and failure to enforce air quality laws. I still got no answer. July 12th, 2012, I wrote to the federal government, Leon Panetta, Secretary of Defense, James Miller, Under-Secretary of Defense for the Army, policy, and General Norton Schwartz, Air Force Chief of Staff, because Air Force wrote a book, and on the first page of the book, they said, "We're going to control the weather by the year 2025." I asked them, "What are they doing spraying this, these chemicals on the public?" I said, "There's violation of United States Code 50 USC 1520, which prohibits the American government from experimenting on the US citizens with chemical agents." I said, "That law also requires the, who's ever experimenting, when the federal government does it, that they have to report to Congress within 30 days." They wrote back, they said they don't know what I'm talking about. We have enough evidence that there's a spraying going all, all over the place. They still denied any knowledge of geochemical engineering weather warfare. They also denied having any information with my freedom of information requests. I personally tested water and aluminum, and I found aluminum had 47 times the normal expected remount amounts. Strontium had 10 to 20 times the amounts. Barium was 20 times. This is what the stuff looks like here. I collected, it looks, most people just think it's a cobweb, but I tested, it has outrageous amounts of barium, strontium, aluminum, but they destroyed the sample, so I'm not letting this get away from me. I'm just requesting that the Board of Supervisors be strong and courageous, like, like Board of- I'm just requesting that the Board of Supervisors be strong and courageous, like, Board of Supervisors in Suffolk County, New York, they outlawed geochemical engineering. Hawaii passed an ordinance against prohibiting geochemical engineering. I urge you to bar geoengineering in Shasta County and pass an ordinance, at least ask some damn questions. What the hell is all this aluminum doing here? Why are the trees dying, fish are dying? Why is there Alzheimer and aluminum spiking? And why are these fibers on the ground here in Shasta County? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marman.
Laura Rhodes, followed by Deborah Whitman. There's no Laura Rhodes. Then I'll move on to Deborah Whitman.
Deborah, if you want to come down this way. Just come through the center aisle, that'd be faster.
Hello, my name is Deborah Whitman. I'm president of Environmental Voices, and I want to first thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak, and most importantly, I want to thank you for being here.
Welcome.
So, I'd like to talk about health issues primarily. I'm a victim of geoengineering, and that's why I started my nonprofit organization, to educate people about this. And we were here, as you mentioned, in 2008, August 8th, 2008, to bring this to your attention. And I'm wondering, what tests have been done on water? What tests have been done on air? Have any of you taken samples of your children or grandchildren to see how many chemicals that are in their body? And so, I encourage you, you know, we're doing what we feel that you should be doing, and hopefully you'll join with us and start doing some testing. I know Shasta County, I was raised here, graduated from Shasta High, went to college here, my parents had businesses here. So, it's very close to my heart, and I'm hoping that you will take a stance here and to do what other agencies and counties are not doing at this time. So, my main concern are fires. I mean, the hotel I stayed at was full of firefighters. You've got fires, and that's because the trees, the grasses, the soil, everything's contaminated with aluminum. Aluminum is an accelerant. They use it in fireworks, they use it in ammunition. That's why the firefighters are out here taking a chance on their lives. Many of them are injured, several of them in other states have been killed for fighting fires. It's a cost to you, and it's because of the amount of aluminum, why they cannot get, and they go for months at a time in some other states and even in California. So, that's one of the issues. The other one, as I mentioned, is health issues. I get calls from people all over the world that are dealing with health issues. And I'm not a doctor, but as I said, I'm a victim. I was going into emergency once or twice a month on an average, and because of respiratory problems before I learned what was happening to me. I've chelated the chemicals out of my body, excuse me, there's flies here, and I built up my immune system, and that's why I'm here today. And I encourage you to please do what you can. I'm not going to give you a lot of facts, other than we've tested, my nonprofit, we've tested trees. The bark is coming back with high amounts of aluminum, barium, strontium, titanium. Those chemicals shouldn't be in tree bark, except for maybe aluminum, you know, a light amounts, but, so where's this coming from? Strontium is a radioactive material. We've done, as Dane has, people go to geoengineeringwatch.org, he's got test results of rainwater. Again, as Francis mentioned, there should not be any aluminum or chemicals in rainwater in the snowpack. So, there's so much evidence out there. I encourage you to have your staff investigate this, warn the public about the health ramifications, encourage them to get tested for metals and all that. So, again, I just want to mention, and I'm going to close, aluminum, side effects, Alzheimer's disease, short-term memory loss, vomiting, inability to absorb nutrients, digestive disorders, itchy rash, and symptoms of poisoning, barium, high blood pressure, heart rhythm changes, stomach irritation, muscle weakness, change in nerve reflexes.
Ms. Whitman, thank you.
So, please, research this, get tested, and start taking care of your health. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Whitman.
The next speaker is Josephina Frail Martin, followed, well, I have Jeff Nelson, but Jeff spoke earlier, and I also have Alan Buckman, who spoke, was one of our original 10 speakers. So, after Josephina, then it's Maria King.
Yes, good morning to everybody. Thank you for letting me speak in this event. I am the lady coming from Spain, but I represent an international platform confronting issues of geoengineering. This is called Sky Guards, and it's composed of civil society associations from over 20 different European countries. First of all, I bring you, this board, and the organizers and the people present, our support from European civil society. Geoengineering is a global problem, and we, the people of the world, we must unite to stop this insanity. Since 1999, NATO countries have seen their skies systematically spread in the frame of climate control programs, without people's knowledge, without people's consent, and disregarding the legal principle of precaution. We took the claims and concerns of European citizens to the European Parliament in a two-day event last year. We let them know that civil society is not going to accept denial or silence for an answer. And we also told them that they are, they should, we made a petition for them to start an independent investigation of the facts exposed and based on the proofs supported, in order to ban these climate control programs, but also in order to demand accountability to those responsible of it. And also, we want democratic and parliamentary control of these military research programs. The petition has been accepted. We are now, we have now to be vigilant to ensure that this is done properly. The success of this investigation by the European Parliament will have a positive impact for us all. We hope that this chamber will also take the positive action, that will go in the same direction, to find out the truth, because you are responsible to defend the common good. And what is more important for us citizens, the common good, is our health and our security. So, I just want to end up expressing our gratitude to these firemen fighting out there, to you for listening to us, and to all of you for coming to this event. Thank you.
Muchas gracias, Diana Yericka Martin.
Our next speaker, I said Maria, but it's actually Marla King, followed by Sue Isinger.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. My name is Marla King, and I was here in 2012, and you heard my story about coming here, wanting to raise my daughter on the land, and we sold our produce at farmer's market, but soon we noticed, this is since 2001, and following, we weren't able to do that. But today, I had to ask myself, if I was living in Germany, and Auschwitz was in my neighborhood, and I smelled what was going on, if it's happening to them, it's happening to me. And so, I felt in this case, it's happening to us, so it's happening, I mean, I just feel responsible to voice my concern, and I believe that you care, and I believe that you're in a position of trust today for this very reason, that you can make the awareness higher, that you can put an article in, writing Searchlight, and acknowledge the facts. So, I just, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Ms. King.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. My name is Sue Isinger, I'm Dr. Susan Isinger. I am a natural healing professional.
Hold that mic, we'll pick you up really clearly.
Okay. Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay. From Corning, and I have observed chemtrails for 15 years. Almost every day, I go out and I look, I take pictures, I study it. I have taken tremendous amounts of study on the geoengineering chemtrails problem. Everything you've heard today about the scientific statistics of whatever was presented today is absolutely true. We've taken testing, actual samples from the air. These have come out to be very high in aluminum oxide and barium. Aluminum and barium are very toxic, they are actually cancer-causing. As a doctor, I can tell you this. This is a cancer-causing chemical that's being sprayed on the people at 15,000 feet. Regular jet trails are up there at 30,000. These are lower-down planes, and they're unmarked. Now, what does that tell you? We're being sprayed, okay? I really have, I hate to have to say this, but we're kind of powerless. We're on the local level. This is being done on some other level. I don't even know if it's our country. It could be something beyond our country, a global thing. We don't know yet. But what can we do? We, you people, you five individuals here, represent the people of this county, Shasta County. You've been duly elected. You are here to take care of us, to look out for our welfare, and the welfare of yourselves and your families, your health. This is such a vital issue. The air we breathe. What is more important? That's why I want you, five honorable people, as our representatives here, I want you to write up an ordinance, I would like you to have discussion about it within yourselves, and I would like you to pass this ordinance, the first county in California to ban aerosol geoengineered chemtrails. And I'm begging you to have the courage to do this, because your children, if you have any, and your grandchildren, and the ones coming later.
My great-grandchildren.
Are going to thank you from the bottom of their hearts, and I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Isinger.
Kathy Cresser, followed by Sally Reposa.
Good afternoon, Board, Kathy Cresser.
Welcome.
Co-owner of Pure Intent Organifarm, and mother of two awesome kids. Thank you again for seeing us today and having the patience and the wherewithal to listen to all of our keynote speakers and experts. My speech was designed to be earlier, to give the audience a brief history of why this item was called on the agenda today. A group of citizens met with Air Pollution Control Board back in May and in June to discuss the geoengineering going on in our skies over Shasta County. These were actually extensions of requests and presentations Dane Wiggington and the other citizens you've heard from today have made to our board back in 2008 and 2012. May's meeting of the Air Pollution Control Board, was to discuss and approve the fiscal budget of 1.4 million, at which point we had requested testing of the nanoparticles and contaminants that we and Dane Wiggington had addressed previously. At that point, Mr. Baugh, you had directed me to a report that Mr. Bell, Ross Bell, from the Air Quality District Management Division, had prepared in 2008, and we had not reviewed yet, and to also prepare a budget proposal for the testing that we had asked and presented to your clerk. At June's meeting, we basically reviewed your, Mr. Bell's report, and deemed it completely off-topic, as it was 56 pages of regurgitated information on smog, and addressed particulate matter of 2.5 to 10 microns. Again, we're talking about nanoparticulates. I believe the experts said that previously. At this point, I decided that it was also, that also, we maybe needed a little further education before we move further, before us as a group move further with any proposed budget items. So, here we are today. You've now heard from the experts, as their fine list of credentials have stated, USDA, the military, fields of biology, neurology, chiropractors, I lost track after the first 12, has pretty much stated, these are in fact the experts. You've asked us, you asked me to have taken action, and now I've brought forth the information and the education that you had requested. I do agree, and I would say that this subject definitely needs further discussion, further testing beyond a newsletter printed off the internet, okay? If Mr. Bell needs any help with any of these tests that we're requiring, I'm sure any of the fine folks that came here today are credentialed experts that we brought forth could indeed help him with what we've asked further. So, again, thank you so much, Pam, for having the wherewithal and the forthright to, again, recognize you're citizens of your community. I personally am tired of this being a fight of us against them. It's all of us. This is a global, global problem. I'm an organic farmer that weeds daily, that I don't see my vegetables after four years of farming this land, the most perfectly and organic way I can, with cover crops, bees, sunflowers. I get one cucumber this week! One! Okay? Because I plant seeds that aren't aluminum resistant.
Professor, that was your notice to conclude.
Sorry, I was already adding here.
Yes, yes.
But because I'm an organic farmer that doesn't plant Monsanto seeds and fertilize them with the chemicals that are sold at our grocery, at our Home Depots, that now I'm suffering the consequences. It is your mandate. You have to do something about this.
Thank you, Professor.
Sally Reposa, followed by, I believe Laura Rhodes is now here, so Sally Reposa, followed by Laura Rhodes.
I have some papers here. Could I use this?
Welcome.
Please?
Yes.
Could you just turn it on?
They control it.
Oh, okay.
Sally, you don't have to turn it on.
How do I show it?
Just put your paper there, they'll take care of you. Lay it on the pad, they'll take care of you. So, moving that over, it actually hides it.
Oh, yeah, that's not good, huh?
If you could leave it where it was, thank you.
Okay, that's what I wanted, anyway. That's good. Okay, as you can see on this map, this is a recent map, most of the golden state is now the brown state. It is parched, baked, and dried, far beyond any historical precedent. Much of California went through all of 2013 with no significant rain, and 2014 is even worse. Reservoirs are nearly empty, streams are drying up, and forests are dying. Catastrophic fires will continue to decimate California due to an ongoing man-made drought. Why is this happening? Geoengineering reduces rainfall. These are pictures that I have taken just around Redding here, it's not very clear. I have hundreds of pictures like this in my phone. The trails you see in the sky are not cloud seeding, as some mistakenly believe. Jet-sprayed aerosols used to manipulate the weather are desiccants. Like what is used in talcum powder, they absorb the moisture, so the storms that normally withdraw their moisture on us flow to the east, where parts of the Midwest have experienced flooding, above-average snowfall, and record cold. There is also the growing effort by the government to take control of water rights in California and other regions in the West. The climate engineers literally have California by the throat, and it does not appear they're going to go anytime soon. The weather makers can drought California into a The weather makers can drought California into a desert from top to bottom, and they can do it for as long as they want. Forests that were green and lush only 10 years ago are now wilting, withering, and dying in places. California has historically grown so much food for the nation that a catastrophic drought has very far-reaching ramifications. A population that has no water and cannot grow food does not tend to be in a position to effectively protest the crimes of its government. Control the food supply, and you control the population. What better way to get people off their land than by drought and by fire? If you can control the weather, you can control the people. People who cannot provide for themselves must depend on their government. Many are beginning to finally look up and wake up to the fact that something profound is happening in our sky. Some are now finally making the decision to get involved with the fight and raise awareness of these programs. It is imperative that we all work together toward the goal of exposing the effects chemical spraying is having on people, plants, animals, and our water and food supply. No one is immune to the consequences, so we can't close our eyes any longer because it, that is not an option.
Thank you, Ms. Repose.
Thank you.
Laura Rhodes, followed by Janice Manini. Might be May Nini. And before you begin, Ms. Rhodes, could I get a couple of people that are maybe in the back to ask the people in the hallway to bring down the conversation level? It's beginning to get loud enough that I'm having a hard time concentrating on the conversation up here. I'm sure other people are having that difficulty as well. Okay. There are chairs up here. Please, please come in and have a seat. That would be great. Thank you, Ms. Rhodes, for your patience.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Glad to be here. I came out from the Texas Panhandle, 90 miles north of Amarillo. We've got some alarming rates of skin cancer in Amarillo. I'm a farmer, rancher. We have wheat, corn, milo, cotton. We have an agronomist that comes out and does soil sampling once a month, and we're finding high levels of aluminum and barium. Our crops are being burned, and we're insured. So then we claim the insurance, and they pay us, and it's a vicious cycle. My question is, I'd asked Dane about this, can the insurance agencies sue whoever's doing this because it's causing a big vicious circle? I noticed while I'm out there, when I go barefoot outside, immediately the soil, it just eats my skin away and my grandson's skin away, and I noticed that my grandson is having nosebleeds now, and he's having repeated illnesses, and he's a very healthy, active, normal, two-year-old boy. But he's coming down with illnesses that they treat with sulfamides. And I've read that sulfamides, natural sulfamides, are what helps you against this aluminum. I'm noticing a high rate of Misa, which is similar to MRSA, in our cattle, so our cattle are affected by this. I've noticed people with high rates. My husband, he's in the soil, working on one of the tractors. He's got a very small cut. It becomes a bad MRSA, Misa infection. He almost lost his arm. This is happening with a lot of our ranchers out there. And I can't get anybody to believe me. They kind of think I'm a lunatic, like this whole geoengineering thing is some theory, and it's not a theory because it's happening to us out there just as well as it is here. It's a big problem, and a lot of people are affected, a lot of cancers. I just pulled up a study that 45% of men are getting cancer, 33% of women, and these rates are alarming. There's something going on, and we need, I don't know who's doing it, the elite, the government, I'm not sure, but something needs to be addressed, and we need to save our planet. This is happening all over the world. And please, listen to the people, and maybe this is the grassroots right here in Shasta County that can get this ball rolling. So thank you, everybody, for listening to me, and then I'm not really crazy.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes. Janice Manini, followed by Mary Sluts. Welcome.
My name is Janice Manini, and I just want to say that the stage is set and the conditions are perfect. The bully fire that's already scorched, according to the fire guys this morning, 6,000 acres plus, is only the first one this summer. Fire is a primary method being used to rid the state of California of its human inhabitants and to destroy what remains of California's ability to grow food for ourselves and the rest of the country. It's been very well documented that the current drought plaguing California has been engineered by spraying hundreds of tons of nano-aluminum into the atmosphere, coupled with the use of atmospheric ionic heaters, known as HARP, to create high-pressure zones over the state while migrating the moisture that would normally fall in our state to other areas east of California. Adding to the fire danger are the metallic dust particles that are constantly settling out of the atmosphere, coating our forest foliage. These microscopic particles are incendiaries, pushing the potential for catastrophic fires even higher. Why would they spray our state with highly incendiary substances like aluminum? It's perfect for creating hotter fires that burn out of control for a much longer period. Combined with the huge fuel loads that exist due to the restrictions on our logging industry, clearing and cleaning out the debris left from other wildfires, they don't allow us to do that either, these conditions can create the perfect storm. This is also a major factor in the decline and demise of forests around the globe. Sick and dying trees, drought, flammable coating, and not only do the fires burn, but they burn hotter than ever, sterilizing the soil and rendering it infertile for decades. Is it just a coincidence that these programs are being deployed in an effort to deprive California of water while at the same time Agenda 21 states that it's the goal to rewild America? It is not a question of if, but when our wildfires happen. What better way to get rid of the people out of the forest and into the cities by fire? And just one other thing I'd like to say. If you saw the news this morning about that Arctic vortex that has come down in the middle of our country, it's never happened before with temperatures dropping to 10 below zero, 5 below zero, and all of the out-of-control flooding that's going on in the east, that's not all by accident.
Thank you, Ms. Manini.
You're welcome.
Mary Sluts, followed by Nancy Shaw.
Good morning. My name is Mary Sluts. I'm a resident of Reading. I've been here 26 years.
Welcome.
Thank you. To the board, I'd like to address one thing. It's a very small portion of what's being presented, and I'm going to be followed by a couple people from the medical field. But geoengineering with health effects. What follows is a fairly exhaustive list of symptoms associated with chemtrail spraying. Each symptom has been identified by various individuals who have clocked their occurrence with the onset of the chemical spraying being laid down over their homes and their businesses. This list has been organized in a descending order with the most commonly expressed, experienced symptoms at the top. Each of these symptoms is frequently occurring in the areas around the world where chemical spraying is now a fact. At the very top of the list is headaches. At the very bottom of the list is anger, rage, and frustration. I will quickly go through the list. My time is just a few seconds here. Disorientation, difficulty paying attention. Sinusitis, skin discomfort, irritation, joint pain. Asthmatic, breathing difficulties, dizziness, and insomnia, lack of sleep. Memory loss, eye problems, eyes are blurred or fuzzy vision. Nausea, liver problems, gallbladder dysfunction. Tetanus, neck back pain, scratchy throat. Scratchy throat is noticed when you're trying to talk and you keep clearing your throat. Allergy symptoms or hay fever occurring out of season, not when there's any pollen. Flu-like symptoms, susceptibility to colds, easily catching colds over a short period of time, one cold after another. A general weakness, anxiety, depression. Coughing without due cause, sneezing, and shortness of breath. Vertigo while standing and walking, which the doctors blame on your medication. And the last one is anger, rage, and frustration. I thank you for listening to us today.
Thank you, Ms. Sluts. Nancy Shaw, followed by Kara Kruger.
Hi. Before I say too much, I'd like to thank you for listening, and I'd just like to dedicate my little spiel here to Alan Alexander in San Luis Obispo area, who just died four weeks ago from melanoma, and loved my good friend, his wife, and their three children. He was pretty young, and he served in the National Guard and went to Iraq several times. So my name is Nancy Shaw, and how did I get here? I'm supposed to be in Zion, Utah. I'm supposed to, I have my two teenagers with me. We were going to take a road trip out that way from San Luis Obispo. But then I knew this was happening, and it just kept calling to me to come here. I've been watching these chemtrails and reading the studies for many, many years, and so this is that important to me, that my girls are waiting in the hotel for me. They're teenagers, one's 18. So, but anyway, so I'm a registered nurse. I've been one since 1985. I've worked at quite a few hospitals. I have seen a huge change in not only my friends, neighbors, personal health, but nurses, coworkers. I have five nurse friends right now who all have cancer. I lost my beautiful nine-year-old niece 13 years ago, last week, to leukemia. They did live near a Monsanto plant for some time. So many people have health problems. The nurses that I know are complaining of being forgetful. I know I'm more forgetful than I used to be. I have a very high IQ, but you don't always know it, especially these days. And these nurses are complaining of being forgetful. They have flu, colds, all sorts of problems. Years ago, I started having, I had three months where every month I had a fever for a week, and this was after extremely heavy spraying. I was out with my dog. I was out a lot hiking. I had a break. It was the shift I was working. And I finally got tested. I thought something horrible was wrong with me. Well, I found out I had low vitamin D levels. Why would I have such a low vitamin D level, which can cause, you know, immune problems as well as cancer? Well, when we're being sprayed constantly with aluminum and barium, you know, the sun's rays are deflected to a degree, and we don't get as much vitamin D. Quickly, I did speak to the San Luis Obispo Air Pollution Quality Board.
So that was your notice to conclude there, please.
Mm-hmm. And they, they said that they don't, they don't test for anything from planes, which is crazy. You have a chance to be heroes. You have a chance to start things rolling, as they say. I really hope you will do this and stop it here, so other counties will follow you.
Thank you, Nancy Shaw. Kara or Kara Kruger, followed by Verna Smith. Ms. Kruger? Okay. Verna Smith? And before you start, Ms. Kruger, just as a notice- Smith. I'm sorry. Kruger's not coming up?
I'm Verna.
Okay, so before you start, Ms. Smith, we'll hold the clock for a second. Speak to the rest of the board. We have gone for three hours. We haven't had a hygiene or a health break. I have a request for one, and I believe that we're going to go ahead, and after this speaker, Ms. Smith, we'll go ahead and take a 30-minute break and come back. There are at least another hour, just to notify you, of folks that have requested to speak today, so we will continue to conclude and be able to take the time with clear faculties and be able to pay attention to every speaker. So, Ms. Smith, if you would go ahead, and then we're going to take a recess.
I thank you.
Thank you.
Please, in your squirming to need to go, I would really want your attention. I have three minutes to say something. I've heard everything that's been-
Would you please address the board?
I'm sorry. I've heard every word from these people. I thank each of you. I thank each of you. I sent you letters in advance, thanking you for your time, appealing to you to listen and then to do something. All of the things that have been spoken about can be answered with HR 2977. Senator Dennis Kucinich, in 2001, the 107th Congress, tried to have a bill passed. It only made it through the first stage of introduction. It was not passed, but in that bill, under Section 7B, you will find that chemtrails is used. It is not a made-up word or a hick word or any of that. It is a word used that is in a document in our Congress that he brought forward. The chemtrail is known as an exotic weapons system. It has a purpose. Its purpose is being used today, and all the effects you've heard today is the effects that this chemtrail exotic weapon system is capable of and is doing. It is built with the design to, and you can look this all up, all of you, I beg you to, the design of that was made to destroy and to damage, to destroy the upper atmosphere, to damage and destroy the ionosphere, the climate, the weather. It is destroying all of us. And so, I don't care, you know, I've heard a lot of people with letters behind their name, and I have the greatest respect. I have respect for all of you, all of you out there. My letters are AKA Grandma. Grandma, the most precious words to my ears. I have 10 grandchildren. All of them have asthma, all of them. I talked to a lung specialist, my lung specialist. I do not smoke, any of that. He said, "Verna, I do not know why." It's epidemic, though. You can now get an inhaler sold over the counter, and it's the cool thing at school. I hear from my grandson, "Oh, Grandma, you can get them all sorts of colors." This is ridiculous. It is sad. I've seen my grandson go into the hospital five times in one year with asthma attacks. My daughter is a well-trained, registered nurse, and she's saying, "Mama, I don't know what to do." And I have tried to share with my own children, but, see, I don't have the letters other than AKA Mama and Grandma, but they love me and they value me. It's what we are called to do. Servitude is the greatest calling there can be. You're paid to serve. We are to serve one another out of mutual respect, mutual concern, and mutual genuine love. Bottom line, treating your neighbors you want to be treated goes beyond a credential, goes beyond if you're a doctor, a biologist, or whatever. You are a human being that requires the very same things as Grandma does.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I want to be around for my grandchildren. I appeal to you, please, do not let this fall on deaf ears. If you do, in your job profession, I can guarantee you won't, when it comes home to your family and to you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Because you won't be able to do your job.
And we would also say that Grandma is a great designation.
Yes, I agree. Wouldn't trade it for anything. Thank you.
So before we take a 30-minute break, I'm going to ask Supervisor Modi to read the next two names that we'll be hearing at the conclusion of that break when we return, so that you'll know your first up.
Katrina Knoll and Kimberly Steele.
Very good. So, Ms. Knoll and Ms. Steele, you'll be the first two up after our break. Thank you. We are at recess. Well, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you again for your patience, and I would note that our 30 minutes extended about an additional nine minutes. Our apologies for not getting down here as rapidly. At the beginning of the recess, I had noted that we had two speakers that we'd hoped would be back in the room, so Supervisor Modi, if you would continue our process, please.
Thank you, Chair. Kat-
Katrina Knoll, followed by Kimberly Steele.
Hi, thank you.
Welcome.
Hi. My contribution today is to issue, is to this issue, is to speak about a cleverly written law that has enabled consistent aerosol spraying to continue without being contested in court, and in fact, provides a legal protection for those doing the spraying. Public Law 105-85, Section 1078, states restrictions on the use of human subjects for testing of chemical or biological agents. The Secretary of Defense may not conduct directly or by contract, one, any test or experiment involving the use of a chemical agent or a biological agent on a civilian population, or, two, any other testing of a chemical agent or a biological agent on human subjects. C, informed consent required. The Secretary of Defense may conduct a test or experiment described in subsection B, only if informed consent to the testing was obtained from each human subject in advance from the testing on that subject. D, prior notice to Congress, not later than thirty days after the final date of approval within the Department of Defense of plans for an experiment or study to be conducted by the Department of Defense, whether directly or under contract, involving the use of human subjects for testing of a chemical agent or biological agent. The Secretary of Defense shall submit to the Committee and Armed Services of the Senate and Committee of National Security of the House of Representatives a report settling, setting forth a full accounting of those plans and the experiment or study may then be conducted only after the end of the thirty-day period beginning on the date such report is received by those committees. B, exceptions. Subject to subsection C, D, and E, the prohibition in subsection A does not apply to a test or experiment carried out for any of the following purposes. One, any peaceful purpose that is related to a medical, therapeutic, pharmaceutical, agricultural, industrial, or research activity. Two, any purpose that is directly related to protection against toxic chemicals or biological weapon, weapons and agents. Three, any law enforcement purpose, including any purpose related to riot control. So Section A prohibits these cruel and inhumane chemical and biological tests on humans. Then, Section B says that the prohibition in Section A do not apply to tests carried out for virtually any purpose. So Section B completely negates the prohibitions of Section A. In other words, the United States government can test chemicals and biological agents on humans for nearly any purpose they desire. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knoll.
Kimberly Steele, followed by Kristin Idema.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Kristin Idema. Kimberly can't speak.
Okay.
So I'm continuing on with, with Katie's talk about 10585, the law 10585. The term "biological agent" as stated in A1 is defined in E as follows. In this section, the term "biological agent" means any microorganism, including bacteria, viruses, fungi, protozoa, pathogen, or infectious substance, and any naturally occurring bioengineered or synthesized component of any such microorganism, pathogen, or infectious substance, whatever its origin or method of production, that is capable of causing death, disease, or other biological malfunction in a human, animal, plant, or another living organism, deterioration of food, water, equipment, supplies, or materials of any kind, and deleterious alteration of the environment. In other words, the U.S. government can test chemicals and biological agents on humans that cause death, biological malfunction, and deleterious alteration of the environment. The term deleterious alteration of the environment brings chemical aerosol spraying to mind. Some argue that none of this activity can be conducted without informed consent, as stated in Section C, which Katie previously quoted. Again, this section reads, "The Secretary of Defense may conduct a test or experiment described in subsection B, only if informed consent to the testing was obtained from each human subject in advance of the testing on that subject." Although Section C seems to provide some protection for us, and that it requires us to be notified in advance if this testing is to take place, in reality, it does not provide any protection at all. Why not? Because you've already been informed in advance, and you've already given your consent. Because this law is publicly available for everyone to read, you have been informed. Because you have not contested it, you have provided your consent. This law is part of a contract between you and the government. When the terms of a contract are known and uncontested, it's called acquiescence. Acquiescence essentially means that both parties are in agreement. Acquiesce means to submit or comply silently or without protest. So when this law was published, you were informed, because you have not challenged it in court, you have consented. By your own inaction, you have said, "Sure, go ahead and poison me, even if it causes death, I have no problem with it." Judges like to say ignorance of the law is no excuse. They say this because you are expected to know all of the law, as it is publicly available for you to read, despite that this is humanly impossible. So in reality, Section C is legally useless. It does not provide any additional protection, it only seems to. Section C's only purpose for being included in this law is deception, and nothing more.
Thank you, Ms. Idema.
Linda Miller, followed by Russ Wade.
Ms. Miller here?
She's here, she's coming. She's trying to get up.
Oh, very good.
Heard that when you lose your mind, you won't miss it much. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Distinguished Board, my name is Linda Miller, and for the record, I do not acquiesce. From this day forward, no spraying or otherwise administering substances upon me without my written consent will be allowed. I spoke to John Blue with the EPA. He's in charge of climate there, and he likened some of this to tinfoil hats, sort of a thing. I assured him, "I'm not crazy, and I'm not stupid." Contrails and chemtrails are not the same thing. Condensation trails are easily, they dissipate in the air, and they do not change our weather. And that's the thing that I have noticed here most overall. When these condens, when these chemtrails are placed into our air, within about four, three to four hours, you'll notice a distinct change in our weather. High atmospheric clouds and suddenly winds, that in the thirty-three years that I have worked outside, I have never experienced in this area, the types of winds that we're having this summer, in a, that accompany the winds, the heat that we're having. John Blue talked to me for quite some time, and then he suggested that I talk to the local air quality control board. So, without any kind of knowledge of any of the groups that we're working here, I called the air quality control board. I have never been treated so rudely in all my life. I have spoke to this board countless times. I ended up talking to Ross Bell, and my action, my request for action from this board is to address the air quality control board, so that when a concerned citizen calls there, they are never, ever treated with such rude disdain. This is just absolutely unacceptable for a tax-paid-for agency. I recently listened to something about us being collateral damage. In a war against climate change, which is what I've read that this has a lot to do with, the collateral damage in any war is human life. Well, the human life of Reading or anywhere else on our planet is not collateral damage, and this is not the answer. I want the board to appropriate funding for testing, if they do not already accept the testing that is, is evidence produced here. And in closing, I listened to a thing from a pioneer. So a woman was talking about what caused me to become an activist, and she talked about the fact that she had children, she'd taken her children out, and her child had dressed up like a polar bear. The polar bears will be extinct by 2050, along with a vast amount of other animals. And in closing, one of the things that caused her to be an activist is she heard about a woman who, after the Bay of Pigs incident, and the possibility of nuclear proliferation, she pulled her class to see whether or not the kids believed that nuclear war was inevitable. All but one child raised their hand. And the response from this one child when she talked to the kids was, she didn't believe that we would destroy our planet with nuclear war, because her parents were activists, and they wouldn't let that happen. It is our job to protect our children, and that's why we're here today.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
Russ Wade, followed by Bert Sted. Not sure if I see Russ here. So, Bert? And following Bert would be Barbara Coulter.
Good afternoon, lady and gentleman.
Welcome.
I'm no stranger to your podium. Today, I talk to you about the fact that, well, you've heard it so much today already, particulate matter matters. For the last decade and a half at least, citizens from around the country have been subjected to dangerous and extremely poisonous brew, containing such things as barium, nano-aluminum-coated fiberglass known as chaff, which you've seen a sample of today. It falls in the east as snow, but it doesn't melt. Radioactive thorium, cadmium, chromium, nickel, and other substances. Now, barium, one of the most important, can be compared to the toxicity of arsenic, not something we all want to ingest. Barium is known to adversely affect the heart. Aluminum has a history of damaging brain function. Independent researchers and labs show off-the-scale levels of these poisons. A few anonymous officials have acknowledged this ongoing aerosol spraying. Numerous tests have been done to verify that these poisons are off-the-scale in their toxicity. They're documented in our water, in our soil, in our air, and for more than ten years, various SkyWatch groups have been carefully documenting and diligently reporting these daily assaults. With all these poisons surrounding our every breath, it's not surprising to see a dramatic increase in illnesses. There are numerous reports of increase in cardiac deaths and upper respiratory illnesses, such as asthma, spoken about here a couple of times today, chronic bronchitis, lung cancer, and often multiple chronic illnesses. The significant increase in heart disease and various upper respiratory illnesses has been linked to a vast increase in particulate matter in our air. This can be seen by some revealing statistics. Coronary heart, heart disease is now leading cause of death in the U.S. One out of every five Americans are affected. Asthma and upper respiratory illnesses, a total of thirty-seven million Americans afflicted. Particle, particulate matter in air pollution, particulate matter consists of tiny particles, ten microns or less. One micron is about one-seventieth the thickness of a human hair. We're not gonna see them, but we'll experience them. These particles can lodge in the deepest part of your lungs, they do not go away, and over a period of time, they will cause damaging lung function. This kind of pollution that we breathe daily can and does cause various upper respiratory illnesses, coronary heart disease, and premature aging and death. It is painfully obvious today that none of you have heard one single person come forward and say, "Stop, don't listen to these people. I want to breathe this stuff in," whatever it might be. I challenge you, no, I charge you with going and doing your own research as our servants, our public servants, and try to find one good thing. And if you do, try to prove it scientifically that it's good. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Barbara Coulter, followed by Stephen Davis. I'll see Barbara, Stephen Davis here? All right. Lisa Thomas, followed by Dennis Dragon.
Thank you so much. I'd like to thank everybody in this room for being here. It means a tremendous amount. My family moved to the Sierra Nevada foothills in California eight years ago. We live in Nevada County, but I'm here because I'm asking you to be a voice for people everywhere. For six years, my mother and I marveled at the cloudless summer blue sky here in California. I hardly ever saw a jet plane anywhere near our house. On April 11th of 2013, that changed. Jets came over our house, two or three at a time, all with persistent emissions coming from them. They repeatedly crossed the sky, spraying these emissions until the sky was coated completely white. They came again on April 12th and created the same white sky. That was the day my breathing problems began, and my heart began to beat erratically. Except for when I was taking pictures, I spent the remainder of 2013 inside my house. I kept my children inside as much as possible, too. From an overlook point near our home, I began to photographically document the haze building up in the Sacramento Valley between June of 2013 and June of 2014. My husband and I watched with disbelief as sutter buttes in the mountains behind them became all but invisible. I also documented the ponderosa and gray pines dying before we were in our present deep drought. I watched the small ponds in our yard become coated with some kind of metallic substance, and I had them tested. Both contained abnormal levels of aluminum and barium. They were lined ponds, plastic-lined pond filled with well, with well water that tested negative for metals. In the summer of 2013, every insect on our property disappeared, and all two acres of our oak trees exhibited signs of anthracnose, a disease usually caused by environmental stressors. I was told this by a UC Berkeley plant pathologist who reviewed my pictures. I collected samples of three rainstorms between the summer of 2013 and January of 2014. All three contained aluminum, barium, and, when I tested for it, strontium. When the first rainstorm puddled on my glass patio table and then dried, it left a shiny metallic film behind, just like what I was seeing on my ponds. I also collected pictures from friends, family, and concerned citizens in every state and three other countries, and made a slideshow to make it easier for people to see what is unfolding in our atmosphere. In May, six concerned citizens and I met with the federal EPA, and we asked them to please help us. They claimed they are unable to do anything without someone from Congress initiating and funding an investigation, and said they do not have equipment capable of testing nanoparticulate-sized matter. I've contacted EPW, the Senate committee that oversees EPA. They will not return my phone calls or my emails. We need your voice. Our planet is being poisoned, our ozone layer is being depleted, our trees and insects are dying, and our children are breathing air so dirty that the haze is now visible every day. Your choices and your actions today could make a difference for millions of people, not just Chester County. I wrote an online petition to Congress a few months ago, and as of today, it has nearly fourteen thousand signatures. We are all asking for your help.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Dennis Dragon, followed by Suzanne Unger. Is Dennis here? Suzanne Unger. Irajah Siva Das.
He spoke earlier.
Yes, he did. Ronald Pratt. Luther Beck.
Wait. It's Raola.
Raola?
Oh. Well, Raola, how are you?
Well, thank you, Supervisors and Chairman Baugh. Thank you for this opportunity to come and talk to you, not totally about all the science that we have heard, but a little bit more.
Make sure we know who we're addressing. Could you state your name?
Raola Pratt.
Thank you, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I wanted to talk to you a little bit more about the, the relationship, I guess, of boards and, and the constituents, and the fact, the value of the people, the intelligence, and the power of us as boards and constituents. I, I'm going clear back to the late 60s, when we started having drug problems with our children. The county school boards put together a great big rush to have sports in the county schools. They put little leagues together. The high schools didn't do it, and, and so the girls didn't have an opportunity to play any of those sports. Of course, we had a big push by all those great guys who were athletes and former jocks athletes, and they had worked their life to make this, these sports pavilions and these great teams, and they put this great teams, and they put this together. They had worked, they could not see their way clear to give all of this funding to girls. Well, they ended up, what we did is, we realized that they were having a really hard time, that they had done all of this. Well, what we had to do was to let them know and explain to them, to the point that they could see their way to provide for girls' sports. Well, that's something like what we're having to do here with all this. The boards and the people have to work together. And then, when the high school districts finally did what they needed to do, and we went on to a few other things in the '80s, in the 1980s, health issues regarding smoking and our job, I was the director of the Heart Association, my job was to educate people. And educating people meant that we had to educate the board of supervisors, we had to talk to schools, and we did all that. The education of our boards, our county boards, became a little bit, you know, there was a little confrontation. And we passed an ordinance that the supervisors would not enforce. We passed another ordinance that was a little, it was probably a better ordinance and was enforceable. And then, we led California in the no-smoking, and it has been a very important help, I think, opportunity for all of us. We don't have people smoking. On my board, I had a cardiologist...
That was your notification to draw to a conclusion.
Okay, my conclusion is that we are, I think that we have to all value each other, realize that we're intelligent, and we're powerful people, that if we work together, we can do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pratt.
Thank you.
Luther Beck, followed by Jim Mackey.
My name is Luther Beck. I'm a husband and a father of eight children and have three grandchildren. What I wanted to talk about was UV radiation. Extreme UV radiation levels that were already occurring around the world due to the ongoing climate engineering support our reports based on actual metering with state-of-the-art meters. A team of researchers in the United States and Germany has measured the highest level of ultraviolet radiation ever recorded on the Earth's surface. Now, finally, confirmation has come from a peer-reviewed report. The report reveals record levels of solar ultraviolet light measured in South America. And here's a quote from the report. "A UV index of 11 is considered extreme and has reached up to 26 in nearby locations in recent years," notes Kriball, the researcher. But we measured an index of 43. If you're at a beach in the U.S., you might experience an index of 8 or 9 during the summer intense enough to warrant protection. You simply do not want to be outside when the index reaches 30 or 40," end quote. "High UVB exposure negatively affects the entire biosphere, not just humans, it damages DNA, affects photosynthesis, and decreases the viability of eggs and larvae. For these reasons, it's important to keep a close watch on UV flux levels. We are particularly concerned by the potential impact of increased UV radiation on plants and animals, simply because they form the basis of our food supply. Significant changes in the health or growth of plants and animals will reduce the amount of available food. Excessive exposure to UV radiation can cause cancers in mammals, such as humans, and damage their eyesight. Experiments on food crops have shown lower yields for several key crops such as rice, soybeans, and sorghum. The plants minimize their exposure to the UV by limiting the surface area of their foliage, which in turn impairs growth. Aquatic wildlife is particularly vulnerable, and it's the first link in the food chain. So goes the plankton, so go we." And there's like a 40% reduction right now in plankton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck.
Jim Mackey, or Jim Mackay, perhaps, followed by Debbie McMaster. Okay, is Debbie here then, McMaster?
Thank you so much for allowing us to speak.
Okay.
Was he?
Okay.
I'm a newcomer to all this. Became aware of geoengineering this last February. Since my awareness, I've been documenting with pictures and writing a daily journal of what I saw in the sky and comparing it with my weather observations. And I gave you a four-page document of my daily journal along with pictures. I also listened to the local weather forecast and viewed forecasts and weather satellites online. On heavy spray days, I would look at the weather satellite and notice that a possible storm front would be coming in. The day typically started out as a clear blue sky morning. The heavy spraying begins, and the sky turns a silvery white. The front comes through or is blocked with little to no precipitation. Still, the Declaration of Independence says, "Governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed." Please, who has consented to this? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Rebecca Wilmann, followed by Lorraine Radsville.
I'm Rebecca Wilmann, and I came here from Oklahoma. I've been aware of this since 2006. I spent almost half of the money I have to be here today.
Wow, welcome.
I'm a mother, and I'm a grandmother. Three weeks ago, there was another public hearing like this one addressing this very same issue, and I have a citation of it. "The person representing the State Department of Environmental Quality consistently responded to the public's concerns, saying their state had no jurisdiction under Article 6 of the Constitution. The state senator offered to hold another public meeting with some federal officials, but without setting a date. When closely scrutinized, taking into account semicolons, Article 6 of the Constitution states that treaties are the supreme law of the land," and I have a citation. "Therefore, it is not unreasonable to believe federal officials will also feign lack of jurisdiction under Article 6 and refer the public to global governing bodies. I have heard it said, 'Half measures avail us nothing,' so I ask, will the above response from our government avail us anything, especially when time is of the essence? Please do not feign lack of jurisdiction here in this case." And I heard before we came aboard that there was that earlier, that there was a lack of jurisdiction here. I say this because there are those in this movement who have projected, based on hard evidence, a possible 17-year window before all life ends. I have also heard it said, insanity is doing the same thing over, expecting different results. This nation has been here before, we just celebrated the history of it 11 days ago. As a reminder, I will read the celebrated document I'm referring to paraphrased to fit today's time. "When in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people, us humanity, to dissolve the political bands which have connected us with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of nature's God entitle us. A decent respect to the opinions of humankind requires that we should declare the causes which impel us to this separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all are created equal, that we are endowed by the Creator of all things with certain unalienable rights, a legal term, that among these is life." And I don't have time to read on, but I have copies. Anyway, in closing, I never thought I would use a certain phrase embedded in memory some 45 years ago, for it was simply an exercise practiced over and over again in my typing class, but it certainly bears repeating today with the utmost urgency and sincerity. Now is the time for all good men to come to the aid of their country. But what really must be said to us this day is this: Now is the time for all people to come to the aid of our right to life. And there's one other thing that I'm adding. I'm an accountant, and I received...
That was your notice to draw to a conclusion, then?
Okay, I have something with regards to, they're excluding nanotechnology from coverage...
You're addressing us, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. They're excluding nanotechnology from insurance coverage, where they're covering terrorism. Insurance companies are covering terrorism, but they're excluding nanotechnology.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilmann.
Lorraine Radsville, followed by David Harris.
Good afternoon, and my name's Lorraine Radsville.
Welcome.
And thanks for having me. I don't mean to cry victim, but I have been suffering for a couple of years from, and, you know, it's something that hasn't been diagnosed. They're like small fibers that have gotten into my skin, they've gotten very deep into my ears. And I live up in Truckee, near Lake Tahoe, and my daughter, when she was six, spent her sixth birthday in the hospital for four days with asthma and uses an inhaler. And so, it was two summers ago, in June, middle of June, and I was getting ready for my husband's birthday party, and I worked in the yard a lot that summer and re-tiled the shower, so I was outdoors, and I had all my tiles laid out and cut thousand tiles, and had a lot of nicks on my hands. I'm German, so I got sweat all coming down my face, and I was constantly wiping my face, and I ended up being misdiagnosed with like four different things, and all of which were contagious, so I hid in my bathtub for fear of contaminating anyone. And people around town, I was afraid to go to my meetings, my church, my anywhere because of the way I looked. And, you know, so I just, I just want to talk a little bit about the disease and the effects of these things, because I have gone to at least 28 doctor's visits, and the first woman thought I was a crystal meth addict. And I've been sober for 13 years, and I've lost many siblings in my family due to alcoholism, which is actually a known disease by the medical society. But because I have these fibers in my fingers, and, you know, most girls don't sit outside and cut tiles all day, but, you know, I just kept being rejected and stereotyped, and my, one of my diagnoses was that I was delusional, I had delusional parasitosis, even though I had samples. And anyone who wants to come up and look at my ears or my face or my hands, I've had them, I can't get rid of them. And so, yeah, I pretty much lost, almost lost my family because my husband listened to the doctor. And so, finally, my friend heard about the chemical trials and the physical things that it can do to people and frogs and nature, and without even seeing me, had diagnosed what I had. And I started a protocol with natural immune system builders and all that kind of stuff, and silver, which, you know, it helps with the compounds of the metals, and so, you know, I'm healing, I'm on the right track. I was down to 105 pounds, but I'm getting healthier and I'm getting the help, and I'm just grateful...
Mrs. Radsville, that was your notification to draw to a conclusion?
Okay, I'm just grateful that you are aware that this is affecting humans, physically and children and older people.
Thank you very much.
David Harris, followed by Sheri Hauser. Is David here? Is Sheri Hauser here? Thinking that's Sheri, is that you coming up? Good, thank you. And that'll be followed by John Dixon.
Hi, my name is Sheri Hauser. I am just a resident of Chasta County. My family moved here in 1963. I'm very concerned for the many grandchildren, nieces, nephews, great nieces that I have living in this county. When my son was born, the RJ actually wrote him up because it was a fifth-generation grandchild. 19 of those 20 sets of grandparents living in Chasta County. I have a lot of relatives here to be concerned about with all this. Okay? And it's making people sick. We are a very large senior, we have a very large senior citizens base in this town. They're the ones that are going to be getting dementia, Alzheimer's. I call myself the canary in the coal mine because I have been fighting kidney disease for quite a while, so I have a tendency that things hit me a little quicker. This lacks good rain, I almost died, my kidneys shut down. Okay, and I only have one left. That's what's happening to me, but guess what? The canary's just a symptom of what's going to happen to everybody. I might be weaker, but this will happen to you, it's going to happen to your children, it's going to happen to your grandchildren, if we don't do something about this really, really fast. All right? We might be able to avoid things like GMOs, cigarettes, but guess what? We can't avoid that air out there. It's, you're breathing it, every one of you's breathing it. Your children are outside breathing it. It can be affecting whether or not you ever, your family line goes anywhere past them. It might end right there. They might be the last ones to survive. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hauser.
John Dixon, followed by Mark Kent. I think John left, so is Mark here? Mark Kent?
Mark Kent's not here.
Okay. And Stephen Funk? Stephen? Followed by Charles Alexander.
Steve Funk, I'm a forester, retired from the forest service.
Welcome.
Grandfather, organic gardener. I've done some research on this subject, including some independent experiments, which I'll talk about if time allows. I'm really here to support the 95% who do not buy into this conspiracy theory. Contrails. Persistent contrails have been around as long as aircraft could fly high enough to create them. It consists of water vapor frozen into microscopic water droplets, generally at relative humidities near saturation and colder than minus 40. This has been documented in many meteorology and cloud study books over the past 70 years. I'll quote from just one, the Peterson Guide to the Atmosphere. "Contrails are a commonly observed feature of the sky. Sometimes they are ephemeral and dissipate as quickly as they form. Other times, they persist and grow wide enough to cover a substantial portion of the sky with a sheet of cirrostratus. Sometimes they develop a series of pendules from which streamers of precipitation are observed to fall." This book was published in 1981. If people don't remember seeing persistent contrails, well, they just don't remember. Of course, we are seeing more of them now because passenger air traffic has tripled at least since the 1980s. Aluminum in the environment. Aluminum is the third most abundant element in the Earth's crust at 8%. Get a little more in clay soils, less in sandy soils. You will nearly always find aluminum in rain and snow tests because there's always some dust in the air. And rain is fairly effective in washing the dust out of the air. Now, here's a test from 1967, from the Canadian Journal of Earth Sciences. It shows 800 parts per billion of aluminum in rain and 460 parts in snow. Does anyone think they were geoengineering in 1967? At that time, the Earth was cooling slightly because weak sunspot activity and sulfate pollution offset the effects of carbon dioxide. Now, metallic aluminum is nearly nonexistent in nature. You generally get aluminum silicate or aluminum oxide. But the testing process works by breaking down the molecular bonds. So when you get that lab slip back, you don't know what form of aluminum you had. Now, some people claim their tests show elemental metallic aluminum, but that just isn't true, at least not with the tests that are...
So that's your notification to draw to a conclusion, Mr. Beck?
Does, for $22. Okay, well, I hope you'll have time to read my handout because I got through less than 20% of it. I hope you... I hope you give this issue the attention it deserves and no more, so.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. Charles Alexander.
Thank you for the opportunity here this afternoon to address the board on the matter of geoengineering.
Welcome, and I'll get you to state your name for the record.
My name is Charles Alexander.
Thank you.
And I would like to open my comments by saying denial is not a river in Egypt. Given the numerous acknowledgements of evidence by different speakers, the idea that there is absolutely nothing happening or that everything is just as- is just perfectly benign is something which is absurd. I mean, there's some sort of experimentation going on, although we may debate and disagree as to the extent of it. The fact is, something's happening. And there were citations of a public law 100 dash whatever it is, I'll have to look at the video to write it down, a paragraph B citing a list of exceptions that only a lawyer could have drafted. And I would remind the board and county council that any act of Congress is subject to the- is subject to the Fifth and Fourteenth as well as other amendments of the Constitution, most notably the- that no one should be deprived of life or liberty without due process. And it seems like with the mounting evidence there is that the basis for a cause of action should be able to be established so that we can test the legality of that sub-paragraph be once and forever at the Supreme Court level so we can settle this thing once and for all and get this geoengineering consigned to the ash heap of history. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Mr. Chairman, that's all the speakers that I have, and I just want to take just a moment to thank our audience members for being respectful of all the speakers and doing the hand wave and it helped us move along, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for helping us.
I'll also thank Supervisor Modi for conducting the list very efficiently. I appreciate that. It allows us, the rest of us then, to fully concentrate on those who are sharing and I think we've had a great day. I also want to add my thanks to all of you, not just for your conduct and your professionalism today, but your kindness. I noted a couple of people were handing out bottles of water to other people and that extreme kindness is appreciated. Supervisor Giacomin, you did a good job on organizing a list of speakers, so thank you for bringing that and bringing this issue to our attention. I don't think that- oh, Mr. Wiggington, you are in the room. Thank you very much for organizing your speakers.
Mr. Chairperson.
We're not going to take convert- we're not-
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but we're not going to start the conversation from the crowd, thank you. I did want to also just simply say, we're going to, just to finish what we had started earlier, we're going to ask Mr. Simon to come up and we're going to hear a few words from him. I think the obvious here is that we've heard a lot of great comments and conversation and we're looking for Mr. Simon to perhaps give us his thoughts on a path forward. Then I'm going to bring it back then to the Board of Supervisors and I'm going to, out of courtesy for bringing the item forward, move to Supervisor Giacomin for some continuing comments at that point. So I would ask this of you. We've spent three and a half hours listening, concentrating, so this is our time to have that conversation. We would appreciate if you would allow us to do that and we'll move forward, okay? Mr. Simon, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a little bit of response. I think that's appropriate. You have, as you indicated, listened attentively to a lot of different perspectives and points of view. I'm going to keep my comments very practical, on the practical side of things, and very brief. I'm not here to refute the information that has been presented to the board. In fact, I respect the opinions that have been expressed and the stories involving empirical observations with regard to what people have seen and experienced with relation to this geoengineering topic. I do not want to marginalize the issue. However, what I would like to do for the board is to put the role of the Shasta County Air Quality Management District into perspective. I think it's quite clear that there have been calls by members of the audience, concerned citizens and sincere concerned citizens, calls to the board to take local action. And what I want to do is to provide a little bit of context in terms of what the Air Quality Management District role is, what regulations and hierarchy of the bureaucracy, so to speak, that we operate under and what our limitations are. And so that the board, in considering what action you might be inclined to take, would have that information as well. There are several federal and state codes, rules and regulations that the local Air Quality Management District operates under. Title 42 of the U.S. Code dealing with public health, social welfare and civil rights, the California Health and Safety Code, the U.S. and the California EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, and the California Air Resources Board. These codes and agencies provide rules, regulations, policies and limitations under which the Shasta County Air Quality Management District operates. What does the Air Quality Management District do? We regulate stationary sources. Those would be sources that include above-ground fuel storage tanks, asphalt plants, diesel engine generators, spray booths, cleaners and a myriad of other kinds of brick and mortar, so to speak, sources of air pollution, as well as major commercial and industrial sources. The Air Quality Management District also issues burn permits to citizens, to commercial and agricultural operators, develop and implement local district rules, participate in the development of region-wide Sacramento Valley-wide attainment plans, maintain monitoring equipment and reporting related to criteria pollutants that are monitored and reported on a regular basis, and administers grants to things like the school bus program where we provide federal and state money to local school districts to replace or retrofit older diesel engine buses to clean up the air from those vehicles. There are a number of other grant programs that are aimed at the same kind of purpose, which is to clean up the air locally by implementing these grant programs. There are several things that the Shasta County Air Quality Management Board or District does not do, and I think those are important to understand too. The Air Quality Management District does not regulate or enforce vehicle emission standards, that is, vehicles that drive on the roads, vehicles that are off the roads or aircraft. Aircraft emissions are regulated by the U.S. EPA and the Department of Transportation. In fact, in U.S. Code Title 42, there is a mandate indicating that the Secretary of Transportation prescribes regulations for controlling aircraft emissions to be carried out by the U.S. EPA. And further states, as some have indicated here in their discussions with other Air Quality Management Districts, that no state or subdivision thereof may adopt or attempt to enforce any standard respecting emissions of any air pollutant from any aircraft or engine thereof. And it goes on to speak to how that would be enforced. I think it's pretty clear that while the board may share some of the concerns and in fact, be inclined to take some kind of action in response to the concerns of the constituents that have spoken here, I think that the ultimate issue goes beyond the Shasta County Air Quality Management District certainly and perhaps even beyond the Board of Supervisors. However, I will conclude in a moment with some suggestions as to what the board might want to consider. What have we done locally in 2008? As was mentioned by the chairman in the beginning of this meeting, we sent a full DVD of the public testimony from a number of people on August 5th, 2008, to the Air Pollution Control Board meeting. We sent that to the California Air Resources Board and the U.S. EPA, indicating that there were concerns expressed and please make note of those. Data for aluminum, strontium and other species that have been mentioned today are locally available through the what is called IMPROVE or the Interagency Monitoring of Protected Visual Environments website. The nearest monitoring station for that program is right in Lassen National Park. And the object of that is to implement the- is to monitor and to prevent visual impairment through man-made sources to the protected areas within the country and Lassen Park is one of those stations. So they're looking for various constituents that are produced by man's activities, capital M, with- that might impair the visual clarity of those protected and very special places. There's about 150-plus sites throughout the country, including Hawaii, the West Coast and throughout the country, where these monitoring stations are and there are policies developed based on the monitoring data that indicate, you know, what ought to be done in terms of cleaning up the air and the visual pristiness of those special places. Aluminum and those other constituents are among those that are monitored. Locally, we have also implemented programs to reduce local diesel emissions and although we do not regulate or set the standards for diesel vehicles, we are again, part of that grant program, involved in programs that would reduce the amount of diesel vehicle emissions by either replacing or retrofitting diesel engines through grant programs that are administered locally. Diesel emissions could be another source of the species of chemical constituents that are being talked about by the folks here as well. Let me finally conclude with regard to the context for the Air Quality Management District with the budget. Every year over the past years and perhaps as many as five years, we have relied on reserves to fund the full implementation of the programs that the Air Quality Management District has undertaken and committed to. In the fiscal year 1415, for instance, we anticipate that we will be using probably in excess of $300,000 of those reserves in order to fulfill the obligations that we have already taken within the Air Quality Management District. I say that again to put this in context, there, although the total budget for the Air Quality Management Division within my department is about 1.4 million anticipated in 1415, we are- 300,000 of that is already over what we have allocated in terms of anticipated revenues. There is no real money, no discretionary money in that budget to introduce new programs, especially ones that do not come with a funding mechanism at either the local, state or federal level. Let me conclude by saying that we are- we stand ready to respond to the Board of Supervisors and to provide whatever information you believe would be relevant in your deliberations. We would, I would suggest, as we did back in 2008, that we send information to those state and federal agencies that are a little bit closer to the source in terms of where the regulations come from and where the authority to do anything about it comes from, and that would be the Cal EPA, the U.S. EPA and Cal Air Resources Board, to at least let them know that you, as the Board of Supervisors of Shasta County, are listening to your constituents. To some extent, you share those concerns. You would like some additional information perhaps and my department, the air quality staff would be happy to work with you as the board in drafting some response or some letter to those other agencies, if that is a direction that you are considering going.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Any questions for Mr. Simon while he's here? Supervisor Giacomin to be followed by Supervisor Chappelle.
Hello, can we get an opportunity to respond to that document?
Excuse me?
That was lies.
Let me repeat myself. We had three hours of listening completely filled with respect. This is our time to have the conversation, whether you agree or disagree. Ma'am, would you allow me to continue my conversation? We expect, no, more than expect, we demand you offer the same respect that we gave you. We would like to have the opportunity to address this as a board and we'd like to get there. That means we want to hear from the people we have asked to address us. That's our responsibility. Now I would like you to simply allow us to continue this. Can we do that? Can we do that? We'd appreciate it, very much so. Thank you so much. So Supervisor Giacomin, you wanted to address the board?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Baugh. Well said. When the letter in 2008 went to those entities, did we ask for a response first and did we get one?
The letter did not explicitly ask for information or a response and to my knowledge, no, we did not get one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, well, do you want to get to other questions first? Chairman Baugh and then-
We can do either way.
Okay, go ahead.
I can move to Supervisor Chappelle next. Thank you Supervisor Chappelle.
Thank you, Les Baugh, Chairman Les Baugh. Mr. Simon, I'm just kind of concerned about if we address these-
I'll get you to scoot closer to your microphone so everybody can hear you.
I'm better now.
There you go, thank you sir.
Have a bad habit of doing that, I think. The entities that you said that we could address these issues to, the EPA, the Cal EPA and the CARB, they will not provide us with the information that we would want that would be correct. Their information is going to be skewed. So if we end up doing something like this, I would like to be able to put our information in those letters and address it in a way that says, these are our findings in Shasta County, can you please explain to us why we're finding these levels? If we don't find the levels, then we don't need to go forward. But if we find the levels, then we need at least to ask them because we don't need a boilerplate answer back from these entities. And that's what I've got to say, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Chappelle. Supervisor Modi?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Simon, you talked about, well, number one, about the reserve level of the budget we have. You mentioned using 300,000 this year. What's- how much do we have left in our reserves?
The reserves are department-wide and I don't have a figure right off the top of my head of exactly what those reserves are.
Can you either ballpark it or can you tell me when you think that reserves is going to run out?
Yeah, I think that probably within the next two to three years, the reserve for that particular division will be used.
Okay, thank you. The question I- the other question I have is, we talked about the counties and particularly getting the readings from like Lassen Park, but other things that we've done here, you've talked about particulate matter in this- at a certain size level and I've heard PM5 and 10 being tossed around a lot. Today we heard a lot and we have, as we have in the past, about this nanoparticulate matter. Does any of our testing measure that kind of stuff?
It does not measure nanoparticles. The monitoring systems that we have measure PM10 particulate matter at 10 microns and then 2.5.
Okay. And do you know if the testing at Lassen Park, does it measure for nanoparticulate?
They get readings on fine aluminum and I can't tell you right off the top of my head what the measurement of those particles would be, but presumably it is the kind of constituent that is of concern.
Okay, I would ask, you know, I really am very disappointed here. You guys are gasping, you're making faces, you're making- you're turning up your noses, some of you. Chairman Baugh, not all of you, but Chairman Baugh has asked you to be respectful. We certainly did not do that during any of your speaking and it's very disappointing that you've conducted yourself so well and then you get to the end here and if you don't like what people say- don't like what people say, that you do that. I don't understand that, quite frankly.
You're going to pay our city officials to libel us.
And you're the perfect example.
I'm going to call for a 20-minute break. We'll be again at 5 minutes after 2. Thank you. We are now at recess. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're back from our recess, and Mr. Simon, if we can get you to come back up, we have an additional question for you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. I just want to follow up with, we mentioned that some of the measurements they do at Lassen Park, and you thought were for some finer material, but you weren't quite sure what that might be. And my request of you is that if you would try to see, if you can find out at what level, what particle size that they are testing for up there, or, and that might go for any other areas around here that we're doing testing, if you're not quite sure what it is, some stuff for us, you probably know, but for, like, the federal level, if you could try to find out what that might be.
Right. Actually, I do have a response for that, and what they do is they have a filtration system that measures, and what I had said, our filtration system monitors for PM 2.5 and PM 10. And what that actually means is that everything that it captures up to 2.5. And so what they have at Lassen Park, as part of the IMPROVE system, which is, again, nationwide, is filtration systems that capture all particles of all sizes up to whatever that filter is calibrated for. And so it's very likely that they would get some of the elemental constituents that are of concern as well, and then they do a full analysis of that filter to find out all of the constituents that are there.
Okay, thank you. I, again, I'd just, I'd like to specifically ask them if they are testing for nanoparticles.
I will do that.
Thank you. That's all I have for now, Chair.
And I have a question for you, Mr. Simon. What would it take for us to test for nanoparticles in Shasta County? I'm not talking about the resources available, but the technology. Where would we go for that information? If you were directed so by this Board or by another Board, how would you handle that request?
Yeah. I would suspect that it's, that it would be a matter of acquiring the monitoring equipment and the filtration systems that would be capable of capturing that in a form that could then be analyzed. The cost of that, I do not know at this point, and whether that would be equipment that we currently have and perhaps could recalibrate, or whether we'd have to start from scratch. I'd have to get back to you on that.
That's fair. Are there other questions for Mr. Simon?
Yeah, if I could just add on to that, that you also might then find out if it's less expensive to just contract that out or something.
Other questions for Mr. Simon? Mr. Chappell?
Uh, thank you, Chairman Baugh.
Supervisor Chappell, my apologies.
That's okay. I just had one question, and it wasn't more of an observation or anything, is that maybe what we should do is wait till Mr. Simon can get the information we need to test for the nanoparticles before we go forward with anything. If that makes any sense, then we know what kind of expenses we're up against, and we know what we have to do. There may be some people in the audience who can make some suggestions also, get ahold of Mr. Simon and come forward with some information that we, then that way we've got some legitimate information that we've got, it's ours, that we can make an analysis on. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Any additional questions for Mr. Simon, please?
I'm sorry. If I could just follow up a little bit, Mr. Chairman, the, you know, I will provide that information to the Board, but what it'll also involve is, you know, what would constitute a legitimate testing procedure? It's not a matter of simply taking measurements, I don't think, at any one point on the ground, you know, or at a particular elevation. If people are interested in establishing a cause and an effect, we can measure the constituents that we find on the ground, but that does not point directly to any particular source of those emissions unless we can further identify those. Really, to have solid information that is irrefutable is probably going to be, you know, way beyond anything that we could contemplate involving aircraft and monitoring in the air and clouds and those kinds of things to actually, you know, trace it back to the actual source. But we can certainly, I think, investigate what it would take to verify some of the claims that have been made with regard to elevated levels of some of these elemental constituents.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Supervisor Giacominis?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Baugh. Thank you, Mr. Simon. I appreciate that. And I would have to respectfully kind of disagree, I think, with Bill a little bit, because I think the point that Rick is getting to, which anybody that is going to be making decisions based on science, it has to be replicable. You know, you have to make sure that you've got appropriate protocols in place. So I would rather investigate fully... I'm sorry.
Very good. I'm right into your mic as you're turning your head. I think we're kind of losing you there.
Sorry, into my mic. Okay.
There you go.
I would rather investigate fully what the park system has set up to see what we can gain, you know, information-wise from that information, to be able to, you know, then utilize, put together information that we've received, put together information from the park on their monitoring, and then try to write appropriate letters and ask for action from these agencies in a response. So that's kind of where I'm headed, but...
Thank you. Supervisor Modi?
Yeah, I agree with Supervisor Giacominis, and I think the important thing is, what Mr. Simon referred to as well, is you need a baseline. And to just go out and, I mean, we could go out and test at Iron Mountain and find out we have all kinds of bad things there, but you need to, you need to have a baseline. And I think hopefully, maybe at Lassen Park, they've done it for a lot of years. We can go back and look at what has changed over the last five, 10, 20 years. Hopefully, there'll be other people, other places that have data like that, that's, that can give us a longer timeline.
Additional comments? Supervisor Quixote?
Thank you, Chairman Baugh. Let me make some general observations and then a couple of specific ones. Today, the Shasta County Board of Supervisors has been the beneficiary of some sincere, passionate and knowledgeable comments, and I thank you for those. I specifically want to call to your attention the outstanding work that is being done on this issue by Mr. Dane Wiggington and Ms. Kathy Cresser. They've done a wonderful job. I think your comments outlining what the AQMD can do and can't do are valid, and I think the Board has to be mindful about those. But I will tell you, especially in the arena of the U.S. EPA, I am disappointed in that... Let me finish, please, before you. You might want to take your hands down. I am disappointed because there was a man running for U.S. Congress that said, "He's one of us." Is his representative here today? Did you see his representative here today? I did not. And I think it would have been productive and helpful had his representative, Lamoffa's representative, been here today to listen to this heartfelt testimony. I am in agreement with my colleagues about sending letters and a call for action, but I would hope that we could go a step further in that. And you tell me, Mr. Lees, if this is possible, which I think it is, I would like for us to send a copy of this video where all of you spoke today, all two and a half or three hours of this testimony. I would like that video to be sent to our senators and our U.S. representatives...
We'll do that.
And also, also our representatives in the state of California.
We'll do that.
Let them listen to the passion that came out of this meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Quixote. Supervisor Giacominis?
Well said. I would so move.
Second?
Second, and then under, then under discussion, Mr. Lees.
May I just ask for a clarification of the motion?
Certainly. Certainly. That we gather the information from the park, so we have some, hopefully, some data. So that's the first thing on the list, I believe. Then we compile information that we heard today in a succinct letter along with that information, send it to all the representatives that David has outlined, as well as those agencies, Cal EPA, U.S. EPA, California Air Board, and perhaps the Department of Transportation, like Rick mentioned, along with a video of the hearing today. Is that clear?
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
So, do you want to resecond? Do we have a second to that already?
We have a second. Your second.
Well, I seconded, but I'll withdraw, Mr. Modi, if you'd like to second it.
I just have a comment.
Okay.
Okay. So do you want to confirm?
Yes.
Your second. Thank you, Mr. Modi.
Yeah, I just want to know if part of that is, we also asked Mr. Simon to go find out what he can, we talked about, you mentioned about Lassen Park, I mean, what we can do as far as measurements and those kind of things, not that we're asking you to do them, but just find out what that process, would that be part of the...
Yes, perfect. You can add that. David, do you agree?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have one other question of Mr. Lees. Mr. Lees, should anyone in the audience wish to get a copy of this video, how can they go about doing that?
There's a couple of ways to do it. The easiest and most effective way, in my opinion, is to go online. Within an hour or two, you'll be able to watch this entire meeting at any place you want to. You don't have to sit there and watch the whole three hours or four hours, but you could actually pick out different portions. So you can actually go on the Shasta County website, go online and watch any one of our Board of Supervisor meetings. And it should be ready to go, certainly, within the next two or three hours. This is a little longer, so I'm giving myself a little bit of time, so...
Thank you, Mr. Lees. Supervisor Modi?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I think we're going to take a vote here in a second. I wanted to add one more thing under discussion. I also wanted to personally thank Mr. Wiggington for your efforts here today. I thought that you put together a very well-thought-out presentation, and I can tell you that I sat down and watched an hour and 30, 20 minutes, I think, whatever it is, 110 minutes of the video, I watched all that, so I had a chance to do that as well. And I think I just would wrap it up with one little, I don't want to go too far with this, but I wanted to say that, you know, this is an uphill battle for probably some of us here on, at the Board level, with this information and stuff. But I thought that the way that the speakers spoke today with respect and tried to just tell their story and not be accusing other people or attacking other groups and stuff, I mean, pretty much everybody did that. I think that helps your cause. If people don't do that, you're going to turn off people off really quick, because no one's going to help you when you spit them in their eye and then ask for help. So I do appreciate that you made that effort, and I know Kathy helped you do that as well. So thank you for making, taking the time and effort to bring so much information to us today.
And then just under discussion, I have one question in regards to the motion that's made. It was pointed out earlier that we had, in 2008, sent the material, but that it lacked the request for a response. Can we include in whatever we send, our, not just our request, I guess, our demand that there be a response to the Shasta County Board of Supervisors? Maybe there's a better way of putting that, but I think you understand my point.
In a timely manner.
Yes. Correct. And I thought I embedded that in there, but it's not...
Maybe you did. Maybe you did. And I just missed it.
Okay, Larry, you did. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Very good. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, you have the motion in front of you. I think it's understood. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposition? Motion passes unanimously. So again, thank you all for attending today. I think that you have exactly what you asked for, a platform. That was offered and received today, and I believe that it wouldn't surprise me at all if the response is one that exceeds far the boundaries of Shasta County in terms of the platform that is offered, as evidenced by those who attended today from around the world. That's very impressive. The next item on our agenda is our closed session, and this is our closed session announcement. The Board of Supervisors will recess to a closed session to discuss the following items. We have an estimated 30 minutes more. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigations, two cases, Ron Clemmons versus County of Shasta, and Tanya Clemmons versus County of Shasta, a public employee appointment title, chief probation officer, and conference with labor negotiator, and the negotiators are Mr. Lees, Ms. Davis, and unrepresented employee, chief probation officer. At the conclusion of our closed session, we will report back in open session the results of our closed session, and as always, the doors to this meeting room will remain open and unlocked, so that anybody that wishes to hear the conclusion of our closed session and announcement can do so. Again, thank you. We really appreciate the great conduct today. Thank you.